All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. At this time, I'd like to call to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission for the date of February 20th, 2020, and we'll start with roll call.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Pittsir? Commissioner Grove?
Here.
Commissioner Casinelli?
Here.
Commissioner Holland?
Here.
Absent are Commissioners Seal, McCarville, and Fitzgerald.
Great, thank you. So, this evening, we've got a couple of items that are on the agenda that are requesting a continuance, and some of that's just due to some noticing issues, and we'll walk through each of those. But if you were here for one of the first three items on the agenda, we won't be opening those up for public testimony today, but we'll just be opening those for continuance, so I just want to make that known. So, the first item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda, and we've got two items today, which is approving the minutes of February 6, 2020, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, as well as the findings of fact, conclusions of law for quality in-in suites, H-2019-0140. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
As presented? Yes, I move to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, at this point in time, we are going to open up the -- actually, first, I'll explain the public hearing process for the evening before we get into the two continuance or the three continuance applications. So, we'll open up each item individually, and we'll start with the staff report. The staff will report their findings regarding how the item adheres to our comprehensive plan and our uniform development code with the staff's recommendation. After the staff has made their presentation, the applicant will come forward for each project to present their case for approval of their application and respond to any staff comments. They will have 15 minutes to do so. After the applicant's finished, we will open up the floor for public testimony. There is a sign-up sheet on the iPad in the back, so if you wish to testify tonight on one of the applications, please go ahead and sign up on one of those iPads in the back of the room. And if any individuals here and speaking for a larger group, such as an HOA, would you just raise your hand so we can kind of see if there's anyone speaking for an HOA tonight? Okay. So, what we typically do if there's a representative for an HOA is we'll ask that any members who want to cede their time can let that representative speak for up to 10 minutes. So, if that's the case, and there's a group of people who wish to cede their time for someone else to speak for them as part of a larger group, we'll ask for that once we get to the public testimony stage. So, everybody otherwise gets three minutes to speak on the public testimony side, and after all public testimony's been heard, the applicant will be given another 10 minutes to have a chance to respond to the public testimony, and then we'll close the discussion. At that time, we'll close the public hearing, and the commissioners will have a chance to deliberate and make a recommendation to city council or a decision on the application. So, with that, we're going to open tonight the public hearing for Handy Truck Line Silos, H-2019-0149, and the applicant is requesting a continuance. So, we'll start. If staff has any comments first.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, the only reason why we're continuing this project this evening is because the applicant did not post the site in accordance with the UDC standards, so we can't hear it this evening, and the applicant's aware of that, so they've been informed, and they understand what the rules are moving forward, and so we just ask that you approve it and continue this project through the March 5 hearing, please.
We could certainly have -- is the applicant present tonight? I think I feel comfortable with the request for continuance since they had a noticing application challenge, but can I get a motion to continue this application for Handy Truck Line Silos, H-2019-0149, to the date of March 5, 2020?
I motion that we continue H-2019-0149 until March 5.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, we're going to move on to the public hearing for Lost Rapids Apartments, H-2019-0146, and that applicant's also requesting a continuance to the date of March 19. Does staff have any comments, or would you prefer us bring up the applicant for that one?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, no comments this evening on it. Again, same thing, didn't notice, didn't post the site within the 10 days as required by the UDC.
Is the applicant present for that one? Do they wish to say anything? Okay. With that, can I get a motion to continue the public hearing for Lost Rapids Apartments, H-2019-0146, to the hearing date of March 19?
So moved.
Got a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now, we'll move on to a public hearing for Lupine Cove, H-2019-0133, and it's the third one, and it's requesting also another continuance to March 19. Staff, I don't know if you have any other comments you'd like to make, or if it's a similar situation on that one.
Yeah, Madam Chair, members of the commission, same thing. The only difference is, we noticed the property, the project with having, requesting R4 zoning, and they actually, the application was meant to be continued, or excuse me, opposed it for an R8 zone, so the annexation description was wrong for the project, and we just need to get that corrected, and we need some time to do that.
And is the applicant here for that one?
Yes, ma'am.
Did you wish to say anything about the request? Okay. Then, if anyone would like, we can request a continuance for the public hearing for Lupine Cove, H-2019-0133, for the date of March 19, 2020.
So moved.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Now, we'll move on to one where we can actually open it up and talk a little bit more. So, we're on for the public hearing of Day Wireless, H-2019-0115, seeking a conditional use permit, and we'll start with the staff report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the commission. Day Wireless is the applicant. They are applying for a conditional use permit and alternative compliance. It is to construct a 125-foot tower for wireless communication facility on 2.5 acres of land in the IL zoning district specifically located at 1668 East Franklin Road. The adjacent land uses are also industrial to its direct north and east, commercial to the west, some R15 zoning to the south across the street. There is an approved CCC and design review on the property as well for the existing flex building that preliminary, preliminarily set out this tower. In the IL zoning district, a monopole wireless tower is permitted by right, but through a conditional use permit, you may apply for a different design structure, which is why we are here tonight, for the steel lattice support. The applicant is stating that, due to the height of being above 100 feet, they need the additional support. This is pretty standard application. Staff does support the applicant's request for conditional use, and the alternative compliance was for the required landscape buffer that is supposed to be around the structure. Staff finds that the alternative compliance methods of a additional vinyl fence and a landscape bed of some kind to be consistent with the alternative compliance requirements. To the north, the existing structure is a very large warehouse building, as you can see here, and directly to the east, there is another building right behind the fence, so there will be plenty of screening. In addition, the applicant is requesting that the commission waive my condition 1.1B of Section 8 of the staff report due to the existing site constraints. When I wrote the staff report, I did not know specifically where this gate was, and it is more constraining than I anticipated, but with the existing structures around it and the existing site obscuring fence, we believe that there will be enough screening.
Can you repeat that item number on the conditions? That was 1.1B?
Correct, 1.1B of Section 8, yes, and I also mentioned it in my outline.
Great, thank you. Any questions for staff before we bring the applicant up? All right. Thank you. At this point, would the applicant like to come forward? If you wouldn't mind, state your name and address for the record for us.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, you just come up here to the microphone. Thank you. You've got to talk right into the microphone. You're doing great.
Okay.
So, state your name and address for the record for us, and then if you've got any other comments you'd like to make beyond what staff said, you're welcome to.
My address.
Yeah, your name and address or your business address.
That's a great question. 7117 Bevland Road, Tigard, Oregon.
And what was your last name, Annie?
Weimer.
Okay, thank you.
I have no additional comments at this time. I can answer any questions you might have.
All right. Any questions?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Casinelli.
The height of 125 feet, is that, is that normal height, or is that considerably taller than most cell structures?
That would be average height for the lattice towers that we've done.
And what, what is the lattice tower? What is?
It is a self-support tower.
Okay. Now, I've got the image up here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
So, I believe typically, the reason that this is ahead in front of us right now is typically they can do a monopole-type structure, and this is just asking for alternative compliance, allowing them to do this type of a structure instead. Staff worked with them to put in a few landscaping conditions, but they requested condition 1.1B removed. Any other concerns with the staff report, or any recommendations there?
No other concerns.
Any questions for the applicant? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Do we have anybody signed in for public testimony on this application?
All right, Madam Chair, one moment, please. Madam Chair, we have four people signed in, but no one wishing to testify.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify on this application Seeing no hands, I'm assuming that the applicant doesn't have any other further comments that they'd like to make. All right. With that, can I get a motion to close the public hearing for Day Wireless, H-2019-0115, so that we can deliberate?
So moved.
Got a motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Commissioners, any thoughts? Commissioner Grove?
I think it's covered with the staff report. That was the only concern that I had going in was what you answered in terms of the fencing and how that needed to be addressed, so I appreciate that.
In general, I think it seemed like a fairly straightforward application. I actually like the look of the lattice structure better than the monopole look, and I think with where, if you've got to put a cell tower somewhere, that helps with improving radio signal for hospital police, I believe that's what we read in the staff report. It seems like a good fit in the type of area that it's in, because it's surrounded by industrial in nature, not a lot of residences nearby, so I feel pretty comfortable with it. But Commissioner Casinelli, any other comments you'd like to make?
I've got concerns with the height and the lattice. I guess I'm on the opposite offense. I think the monopoles look a little bit better. It's, you know, to me, this seems like something that you'd see out in the middle of nowhere, you know? A large power pole and 125 feet is pretty tall. I mean, there are, that whole corner there is industrial, and I think the corner to the west there is, I think it's also going to be industrial. There is the residences to the south, which is not blending into that, but I'm not completely sold on it, but I'd like to see something that's, kind of fits a little bit more. And maybe a question for staff. What, is that within the height limitation in that, in that area, the 125 feet?
Commissioner Casinelli, the, in the IL zoning district, there is no height restriction for wireless communication facilities.
There's no height? Okay.
Correct.
What are some of the, what are some of the normal, if there are height requirements for antenna?
Yeah, Madam Chair, members of the commission, we've seen anywhere from 60 feet to 120 feet throughout the community. Just about a half a mile away, we have the Ada County Dispatch Center that's off of Pine. They have the same structure that, they received CUP approval to do the same thing. These type of antennas are a little unique from a cell tower. They have to be a certain height in order for them to ping to all the other emergency dispatchers throughout the valley, so although you won't see a lot of towers, you'll see them taller, because that way they have to put up less towers, because that way they don't have to ping off of so many different towers. They did, the applicant did reach out to the 911 dispatch center to see if they could co-locate on their tower, and they were denied that request, and so they decided to come move forward with their application and take a chance with you this evening. But our preference in our code is always, co-location is preferred, and if not, justify why you think you need it, and given that their business is installing that equipment into emergency vehicles, that's probably important that they have that facility on their site in order to test the equipment as well. So, that's why staff is supportive of the design and the additional height requested by the applicant.
And Madam Chair, Commissioner Casinelli, if I may add, the lattice structure that is located at the dispatch center is 180 feet, so this is actually much shorter than that.
So, I was going to say, I think I've seen other towers come in at a higher height than this one, and part of the challenge is that I think their equipment doesn't work unless it's at that 125 feet, which is why they're requesting that height.
Okay. Madam?
Commissioner Pittsir?
I'm under my, I mean, we asked you about one.
Oh, your microphone. Turn your microphone on.
Sorry.
Sorry, I'm questioning as to why a monopole can't be used on this site, and why we're going for lattice.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, it comes down to integrity of the structure. The taller you go, the more support you need, and so this structure lends itself for taller towers than you, the typical monopole. So, that's why they're, that's why the Ada County Dispatch Center went with a lattice style too, because of the additional height that you need in order to get the towers taller in the air. And so, monopoles usually are a little more difficult to erect and engineer at that height than this design. And I'd also let you know, the one at the dispatch center, it's probably less noticeable than if you had a big round monopole sticking up in the air, because it gets pretty narrow at the top of the pole, so it typically blends in a little bit more into the sky than you get with a typical monopole.
Bill?
Madam Chair. Staff question. I believe in the report, it said that if a monopole was used, additional support structures would be required, is, was that something, did I read that correctly?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Grove, I do not believe I stated that there would be additional support structures, maybe referencing additional support in the sense of additional buildings for different equipment that could be fit on this pole alone. In addition, I did state that monopoles are permitted by right, so they would not even need a conditional use permit in this zone.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Casinelli.
Due to technology, I just pulled up Google Maps and take a look at the tower there for the 911 dispatch, and I will say that actually, that looks less obtrusive than a monopole, from what I could, just from the images here, so, and it's, it'll be shorter than this, so I'm glad I could take a look at that.
Thanks, Commissioner Casinelli. Any other comments? All right. I would certainly entertain a motion if someone would like to make a motion on this application. I know that the only request we had was for removing condition 1.1B, which was a landscaping condition, and staff was amenable to that request. Anyone want to take a stab at making a motion? Commissioner Pittsir?
I, I move that we approve the request to approve the Day Wireless, H-20-dash, sorry, H-2019-0015, and waive condition 1.1B of Section 8 of the staff report, and all other conditions to remain.
That's great. All right, we've got a motion and a second. Motion to approve the wireless, Day Wireless request for H-2019-0115, for the conditional use permit of the 125-foot tower. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you. We'll move on now to the public hearing for Meridian Station, which is file number H-2019-0142, and we'll begin with the staff report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Next item on the agenda this evening is the Meridian Station Conditional Use Permit. The subject property consists of 6.13 acres of land, is zoned Old Town, and located at the southeast corner of North Main Street and East Broadway Avenue, and is also located north of the railroad tracks. A variety of uses exist in this area, including restaurant and drinking establishment, offices, industrial and residential uses in the Old Town and R15 and IL zoning districts, as you can see here. If you looked at the purpose statement in my staff report for the Old Town District, that particular zone and that land use supports a vertically integrated project that the applicant's proposing this evening, so we find that it is consistent with the Old Town Comprehensive Plan designation, as well as the Old Town zoning district. The site is currently developed with vacant buildings. It's pretty, it's a blighted area for downtown. I've been with the city for almost 13 years, and we've been trying to get something started on the site for quite a long time, so it's exciting to see some buildings being removed from the site, and that we actually have a pending application in front of you this evening. So, the applicant, in the Old Town Zone, the maximum height limit is 75 feet unless you go through the conditional use permit. And so, the applicant is here this evening to discuss with you erecting two vertically integrated structures at a total height of 100 feet, consistent with the Old Town Zone. You can see here that there's a west building and a east building that's proposed for you this evening. The first phase of the west building will consist of approximately 7,740 square feet of retail building on the front of it, and you can see that in the blue color here, and then have a total of 185 residential units, all consisting of studio, one-bedroom, and two-bedroom units. There'll also be a two-story parking garage that contains 168 parking stalls, and then in the landscape plan, just to the left-hand, the right-hand side of your screen here, you can see there's also going to be some open space proposed for the units as well, and that's approximately 4,713 square feet. The east building will have 717,656 square feet of retail, 200 residential units, again, that same unit mix of studio, one-bedroom, two-bedroom units, 382 parking garage spaces, and then 8,213 square feet of common open space. What's unique about the east building here is, you can see, there's actually two common open spaces, rooftop terraces for the residents to use in the future, and then as part of the development, so that parking goes along with those two structures, but the applicant's also proposing on the western third of the site, an additional 109 parking stalls. Again, this is interim, slated for a future phase for some additional offices, but as part of their proposal this evening, we're talking about the height of the structures, but at least they wanted to give you the development context for what they plan to do for the entire six-acre site. Typically, with vertically integrated projects, we don't require open space and amenities, but in working with the applicant and pre-apping with the applicant, it was important that we have some of those elements and bring that to our downtown area. It's important for people to be able to work, play, and recreate where they live in downtown, so I'd have to say the applicant's done a pretty good job of providing not only open space for the residents, but also the rooftop, or the street-level plaza that you see in front of the north side of the west building here. Don't have all of those details yet, but that will happen as we move through additional development applications with the city. The applicant has provided some renderings for you to look at this evening. Again, not a lot of details on what the building materials are, but they're, really, this is just the bulk and scale and mass of the proposed structure, so you can see how it sits on that property as you take that conditional use permit for the height under consideration this evening. I would mention to you that the applicant is also proposing access, one to Main Street and one to East Third here through the site. If you had a chance to read through my staff report, I did note that our preference is for them to not propose access to North Main, but take it from Broadway, which is the lesser street typology. Currently, we have North Main as an arterial street, so it's our preference, and our code requires them to take access from a local street, which Broadway Avenue is, so we're asking them to redesign their property, redesign their access, remove that access point to Main, and take access from Broadway in this general location here. As part of the proposed development, the applicant will also be required to put on all of the streetscape improvements along Main Street, Broadway, and East Third Street. A few years ago, our long-range planner, Brian McClure, went through great lengths to adopt a downtown cross-direction, cross-section master street guide that we're supposed to use, and it kind of has the, how the streetscape's supposed to look on our urban streets. The applicant is required to comply with those standards moving forward through this process. I would mention to you that once, if approved this evening, all the other approvals for this site require staff-level approvals. It will not come back to this body for any additional approvals. One thing that staff was concerned with in communicating with the applicant is making sure that we have adequate parking for a development of this size. Typically, in urban developments, you want less parking, because you want people to live and walk and have all of those amenities downtown. The vision for downtown is always to have kind of shared parking, structured parking, so that we can kind of consolidate our parking in the areas, have walkable streets, have on-street parking for residents throughout the day. And so, when we were analyzing this project, if you had a chance to look at the staff report, the applicant did a fairly decent job of kind of laying out what they're proposing for parking, and looking at the code and what they're proposing, the code requires them to have 414 parking stalls. As proposed before you this evening, they're proposing over 659 parking stalls on this site, so definitely proposing more than what's required in city ordinance. But I'd also mention to you that, again, this parking lot on the western half, or western third of the project will be slated for two office buildings in the future, and so that will be removed. And so, at some point in time, if the site doesn't have adequate parking, the applicant will have to either go through an alternative compliance process with the city, which, again, is staff-level approval, and will reevaluate the parking counts at that time. But right now, staff is pretty comfortable with the parking ratio that they're proposing this evening. Don't want to spend a lot of time on that this evening, but it is an important component of this particular project. I also noted in the staff report that the west building did not have the required number of parking stalls based on the ratio that they provided, but because this project will be held under common ownership, we're able to take the cumulative parking for the overall project and find that it does meet the parking ratio of the UDC. So, as I alluded to, again, the final design of this building is not approved at this time. We just basically want you to see what, what the scale and mass is that they're proposing to let you know how it would look with a 100-foot-tall building on the site. Staff is confident that what they're proposing fits in with the surrounding area. We are supportive of the CUP. In looking at the public record, it doesn't look like we received any public comments on this application. With that, I'll conclude that staff is recommending approval with conditions in the staff report, and I'll stand for any questions you may have.
Any questions for staff at this point?
No.
All right. With that, would the applicant like to come forward? State your name and address for the record for us.
Madam Chair, my name's Jeremy Putman, and I work at New Design Architecture at 725 East Second Street here in Meridian. And one thing I wanted to do is just come before you and talk to you about the overall concept for this project, and address some of the comments that we heard both in our neighborhood meeting, and also from the, the conditions in the, in the staff report. First is, the, the project has been rebranded to Union 93, formerly Meridian Station, still the same, just, just the name for that. Bill, just real quick, do I have control here? Okay, perfect. Meridian has been expanding over the recent years, and the population of Meridian and the population of Meridian increases within, from within the state and without. Meridian is an extremely desirable place to be and to live. It has also stretched, this growth has also stretched our local infrastructure, and there's a need to densify in the right areas with, in order to be responsible with sprawl and in order, to lessen the load on our expanded infrastructure. We're looking at this downtown location as one very desirable location. We have got a lot of services within reach, mainly from employment in downtown businesses, other industrial operators and retail opportunities in the downtown corridor and just outside. There is a great lifestyle that's presented and an opportunity here in the Rails-to-Trails that's being developed, the extensive Meridian Parks system. And there is still a lot of entertainment opportunities, both downtown and just outside. Everyday living is accommodated by grocery stores, restaurant options, transportation and education within walking distance. This is, this proposed project is on a site that has been left and underutilized for many years. And I think this is a great opportunity for revitalization and to bring some life into the area. City Hall has spoken about the need to energize the Meridian downtown core. And businesses are coming into this area, and they're having a hard time finding office space and places for their employees to live. Growing businesses even within the downtown area are actually leaving downtown because there's not available opportunities for office space. Our company, New Design, is actually growing, and we've, you know, cobbled together some spaces in a couple of buildings downtown and, you know, we're experiencing a little bit of this. So to see some more office space come into the downtown area is, I think, a great opportunity. We are seeing a renewed interest in bringing residents and businesses together. And this project would support a mix of uses and provides residential and commercial opportunities. Got this here. Just a larger view of the proposed site plan, noting the entries. The, we heard the concerns about the entrance on Main Street, and during the CCC process, we're definitely willing to work with the city and ACHD to determine the best location for the entrances, for that interim parking, and then also the permanent entrance for that future office space. Currently, the ones highlighted on the west side there are existing curb cuts. We can, more than willing to work with the city on what that looks like. We're just trying to reuse what's there for that interim office, or interim parking area that is mainly slated for city use during the construction because we know there's also, the city has a dearth of parking available. We are asking for allowed, an increase in the height from 75 foot, the 75 feet that's allowed, to a 100-foot. And in order to provide the needed density for the persons in this project, whether it's residents or businesses, that is what has pushed us to exceed the height limit of 75 feet in the Old Town Zone. This project will provide housing, onsite parking and commercial space in its proposed 100-foot building height. The levels of the parking are a main driver in order to get the number of onsite parking stalls. And residential levels also have a height demand on this project. And one thing I wanted to bring out, one of the uniques of this project is that we're exploring currently pricing this project to be built with modular construction. There are several modular manufacturers in the valley that have been doing modular construction for multifamily and hospitality. But in general, most of their product is shipped outside of the state. And we feel that we are at kind of a tipping point in the valley where we can actually experience the benefits of that type of construction in, here in the valley. Couple of things that does. It increases the quality of the construction being built in a controlled environment. And then, it also reduces the construction schedule. When the podium and the site work is being done and completed and cured, at that same time, the units are being manufactured in a controlled environment. And when the podium and site are ready, those modules are brought in and craned into place, thus shortening that schedule. So it's less impactful on the neighborhood during construction. Just a couple of views seen in the staff report, but just a little larger. I did want to address a couple of the comments in the staff report about finishes. This is not the final design. We just needed to get something in to address the height, the height request that we're asking for. We will certainly work with the city and the design guidelines to create a building that has a mix of materials and fits within the urban fabric that we have here in downtown. And so, with, oh, and also lastly, I guess, to address the streetscape, when we come in for full CCC application, we will have those requirements for the streetscape on all sides of the building. Let's see. And in the future, with that interim parking space, that is just temporary. When we come back for the office building, the programmed and required parking will be provided in that, in that construction. We're also looking at another couple levels of parking structure as well. So we do want to make sure that, yes, there is ample parking on this, on this site for both the residents and the public to come visit these commercial spaces. And with that, I'm ready to stand for any questions that the council has.
Thank you. One quick question I've got before I open it up to my fellow commissioners. The building, I'm assuming, will be fully sprinkler because of its height?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you. Any other questions from the commission right now for the applicant? All right, I think that's it for now.
Okay.
Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed in to testify for this application?
Excuse me, sorry, Madam Chair. We have several people signed in, three of which choose to testify, the first being Shannon Engel.
Shannon, if you don't mind restating your name and address for the record when you come up, that'd be great.
Shannon Engel, 685 Woodbury in Meridian. And let me start, excuse me, by saying this is not something that I would normally do. Obviously, I feel strongly, my voice is nervous. I have a business downtown. I'm actually neighbors with New Design. Get along with them very well. I'm friends with all of the other businesses downtown. I run Coffee Paint Repeat. It's a local business where the community gathers. They have celebrations, photo shoots. It's a well-used place. Families make memories there. I've been downtown for three years now. I've survived the Pine Street widening where the construction workers and everybody had to come influx into downtown Meridian for parking. It was pretty bad for a long time. It affected business when we had to take that overflow. And that wasn't even for a very long time. And it did affect all of us. At the time, I did call the city of Meridian to ask for help. Can you come and give some tickets? Can you come and mark some tires? I did have a city worker come into my business very aggressively, wanting to know why I was complaining. Had to have her leave my business. She sent me flowers. I'm not totally, I'm not really sure that we're going to be protected during construction of something this large for this long. Parking is only monitored Monday through Friday, eight to six. When these apartments come, who's going to help us as businesses with the overflow from all of the apartments and everything else Friday from 7:00 p.m. until Monday at 8:00 a.m.? Literally, hundreds of cars could sit on the streets and not move and not be ticketed, and nothing could happen. I understand they're putting in 550 parking spaces in these garages for 385 apartments, 29,000 square feet of retail, 120,000 square feet of office space. I just, it doesn't seem like a math equation that really fits because everybody in those apartments, they have friends, boyfriends and girlfriends. They're going to have parties. They're going to have people visit. Those businesses are going to have people that need to work there. The offices are going to have people that need to work there. I just don't know that, what is that, 170 spots left over, that that's enough to take care of all those people? And a lot of us, small business owners, have been downtown for a long time, and we're just scared. We're scared of this big thing coming, and we just want to be seen and we want to be heard. And how do we survive? How do we survive through construction? And how do we survive after?
If you can wrap up your thoughts.
Yes. A couple of questions. When tenants rent their apartments, are they given the option to pay for a parking space in the parking structure or park on the street? Because then that could be an even bigger problem if they just choose to find parking on the street. And we're already absorbing the overflow from these apartments on Main where there's only one spot in the garages per apartment where people might have two cars per family. So we haven't even felt the impact of absorbing that overflow yet. And now we're already talking about absorbing overflow from 385 more apartments. So I just want people to really think about what downtown can look like. And have you driven on Main at 5:00 o'clock recently? So, that's all I wanted to say.
Appreciate you coming to speak in tonight. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Lindsay, excuse me, Lindsay Anderson.
Lindsay, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address again for the record. We appreciate it.
My name's Lindsay Anderson, and my business address is 725 North Main Street. I currently own a salon right here on Main Street. And the future of our building is nonexistent either with those previous apartments that have been approved already. I'm basically here to just second about everything that Shannon had already said. I feel like as business owners in downtown, not a whole lot of knowledge has been shared with these big projects until we see articles online and Facebook with friends of ours like tagging us in things, like, did you hear that this is happening? And it just, I don't know. As a kid growing up on the streets of downtown Meridian, it breaks my heart to see it change this much. I'm all for, you know, a facelift and, you know, kind of making it exciting and new and fun and look pretty because there are certain spots like this location that I feel like have sat for many, many years, and it is time to do something with it. But I just am, like Shannon said, very, very nervous about what the overflow of that many people, I mean, the ones that I sit underneath are going to be 200-plus, I think, apartments and like 100 parking spaces outside, which they expect to have restaurants and a potential salon to stay underneath of that when, where am I even supposed to park to go to work? So, yeah, like Shannon said, with having that many more apartments coming into downtown, there's, to me, it makes absolutely no sense who thinks that the math equation of that will find parking for people to find a space to live or to work or to play in downtown Meridian. So that's kind of all I have to say. Just, it really worries me.
Thanks, Lindsay.
Madam Chair, Tina Seko.
Tina, same request. If you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record for us, we'd appreciate it.
Tina Seko, 310.
Wait till you get to the mic, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Tina Seko, 310 East Broadway, Meridian. So I live on the corner of, pretty close to the corner of Third and Broadway.
I'm sorry, if you wouldn't mind speaking into the mic. I know that our recorder has a hard time hearing otherwise.
Oh.
Yeah, you can pull it down towards you.
Oh, okay. So, yeah, I live on East Broadway, just a kiddy corner from where this development's coming in. And my thoughts mirror the previous two girls exactly on the parking. I don't have off-street parking at my place, and I also run a hair salon in my home and have for 20 years in Meridian. And our parking already, without any of this, is getting tougher and tougher every day to find parking with all the existing businesses coming in. So I wish some more thought was going to go into this before you just plunge and protect us that are existing down there so these people, residents, cannot use our parking. And I'm very concerned about the entrance off East Third because you know there's a lumberyard across the street with big trucks turning all the time, and they can barely make that corner from Third onto Broadway as it is. And having the tracks there with no big things that do this, they're on Main Street but not on Third. So it's really easy to miss a train, I mean, to not see those trains coming down those tracks. You're bringing all those cars in, you know, and nobody can be able to see the trains coming like they can now anyway, unless you're on Main. And trying to pull off of East Third into a parking lot with big lumber trucks coming around the corner, I think we need to think about this a little bit. And I would like some assurances that I would have parking because, you know, I may only work a couple more years only when the project's done, but still, I cannot haul groceries four or five blocks away to my house. And St. Al's, when they bought up most of downtown Boise around their area residents, they did put in parking, it was kind of like a meter parking where they have to have a tag to park there. And I think that would be very critical for some of us that are older, retired, with disabilities and stuff, that cannot afford to put off-street parking in the back of our yard. As you know, it's a big bill. You have to bring in gravel. You have to take down your fences, take down your sheds. Everything you've worked for is going to be gone. Everything you've worked for is gonna be gone and then you still not be able to pull into your own spot in the back. It's something I will not be able to afford. So I wish there was more planning and I do oppose the height because it's already tall enough and we're already gonna block our, it's gonna darken our city, our street light coming in for our gardens, our flowers, whatever. I don't oppose the project itself, I just think it needs to be, you know, thought about a little bit more carefully. The height, one of them, 25 feet might not seem much to you, but when you see downtown Boise and how dark it's getting with all those tall buildings, it's almost like Portland now. You can't see, there's no light. And so we would love to have our light. Taking away our light, taking away our parking, not assuring us, not assuring all of us, business owners and residents, will have our own parking and causing a hardship to us is a major concern. So I would like to know if there's gonna be any more studies on this before we just, you know, let this happen. The railroad situation, I mean, the railroad tracks, the lumber trucks, I don't even know what you guys are thinking. I think it's bring to bring something here, but maybe not so huge.
Well, we can let...
Possibly.
We'll let the applicant answer some of your questions along with the other questions about parking, construction timelines, all of those things too. So, thank you, appreciate your comments.
Madam Chair, Kyle Jones.
Name and address for the record too. Thank you, Kyle.
Sure thing. Kyle Jones, 412 East Broadway. I am in support of a project like this. However, in previous comments, taking into concern relative building heights, being that kitty corner, you have single-story homes, 100-foot, excuse me, 100-foot structure, you know, might turn this guy a little dark around 4:00 p.m. instead of 7:00. But just an example, I'd also like the applicant to answer any questions if he can prior to hearing any more answers from me. But overall, in support of the project, just perhaps taking another look at the height. So, thank you.
Did you have any specific questions? You wanted us to make sure the applicant addressed tonight?
No, I believe those concerns have already been raised. Just wanted to voice my support in the development of this site, however, with the concerns that have already been noted taken into account. So, thank you.
Thanks, Kyle. Appreciate it. Madam Clerk, anyone else?
Madam Chair, that's all that's signed up.
Would anyone else like to testify on this application tonight? Go ahead and come up forward and state your name and address to the record once you get up to the mic.
Hi, my name is Cheryl Jones, 830 North Main Street. And this must be like what it feels like to get a Grammy. I'm like so embarrassed. Anyway, I think that we're all, my daughter and I own a small business also in downtown Meridian on the corner of Pine and Main, which is actually a prime location in my mind. And I think we're all, as small business owners, so excited about expansion and what that looks like in productivity and community for the city of Meridian. I think the challenging part for us is like we are in a prime location and yet we feel like there's not a draw to come to downtown Meridian. There's no, like, why are people gonna come here? They're gonna go to 830 Commons to have dinner. They're gonna, you know, maybe go to Eltona to have dinner. But what is the true draw? There's no draw there. So the actual idea of having more retail space and people wanting to come to downtown Meridian, I think we're all excited about. But when you're talking about 300, over 300-plus units, I don't know if they're, the one question would be is, are they low-income? I don't know the answer to that, probably everybody else does, but I don't know if they're low-income, if that's what they're focusing on. But you've got 300-some units, you've got two cars per family, not just one car per family, but you've got two cars. And if you've got a teenager, now you might have three cars. That amount of parking that's being proposed isn't gonna accommodate all those people. And the fact that they can, in the future, everything is gonna be just voted on by the staff versus the community, they can take that extra parking away if I'm understanding it correctly, turning it into more retail or space for businesses, that's a little bit scary also. And for the small businesses, if people don't find a place to park, they're not gonna stop. They're not gonna come in. And we have a shop. So for us, it's like, they might park and go to a restaurant, but they're not gonna park and try to get to the gift shop. Do you know what I'm saying? So it's just, I think it's a concern, but we are excited. But like, we don't even know the owner who's proposing this and we're a business in downtown Meridian. And I feel like if we want to come together, it's important that we all work together too and meet each other and know each other and no concerns and just listen to those, I guess. Yeah, I mean, we try so hard to actually collaborate between our small businesses, all of us, and so it's hard to see something a lot bigger coming in over the top of us. We already fight with big-box stores, you know, on Eagle Road. It's like they have everything accessible to them that they need. So, I don't know, that's just my point of view. Sorry. But I appreciate you guys listening.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to testify tonight? Go ahead and come forward, sir. If you wouldn't mind stating your name and address to the record, we'd appreciate it.
So Mike Prada, 7165 Neopito, Yellow Fern Road. Really, I've been eyeballing this property, I'll be honest with you guys, for probably years now, about six years. And I worked for the railroad. I switched out that track all the time, switched over to Pearl Bill. So first thing I wanna say is I apologize if I've ever held you guys up, made you guys late for work. Really, I can't emphasize that enough, I'm sorry. I'm just trying to do my job. On the side of that, my side note there, I've been looking at this property on that siding and, you know, you have 150 feet with the easement of the railroad. I left the railroad and I have a transloading idea that I would like to implement here without, I don't wanna say too much without doing a non-disclosure agreement. However, how much of this siding, 'cause I see where you guys have rails to trails, I'll tell you right now, the railroad does not want anybody there. I mean, you guys are downtown Meridian. It's a great location, I can't emphasize that enough. But you know, when you have railroad tracks and it's an industrial area, I mean, there's not enough real estate to keep on putting more tracks in. The siding right there, I could still do my business plan. However, I wanted to lease that from Union Pacific and found out in October it was sold. I'm just kinda curious on how far that siding, where exactly is that property line gonna be? Because I mean, I could still do my job there, I'm just kinda curious on what's allowed. Because it says it's gonna be used for buses, is that correct?
We can certainly have the applicant explain more on what's available there.
Yeah, Main Street, Third, Street Access.
Unless staff has any comments they'd like to make to that question.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, currently on the site plan, it's showing essentially emergency access in the railroad right away. He's correct, there's 200 feet that the railroad has. The pathway itself is outside of the railroad corridor, which is a little bit north of that. But it does say access to Third Street and it says for fire and buses. So anything that happens in that area, they're gonna have to work with the railroad to make that happen. And they're gonna have to satisfy a fire department requirements too. The applicant may have some more information as to what conversations they've had with our fire department in the railroad, but the gentleman's correct, currently there's nothing allowed in there unless you can reach an agreement somewhere. And that's something that the applicant's gonna have to do moving forward.
I appreciate it, thank you. I hope I don't wake anybody up.
Thank you, appreciate it. Anyone else here would like to testify on this application tonight? Seeing no more hands, oh, we've got one more. And state your name and address for the record for us, please.
Hello, my name is Kaylani Perry. I am with Cheryl Jones, my mom, and our address is 830 North Main Street in Meridian. So we own the Home Decor and Gift Boutique, as she stated, it's called 44 East. And like she said, I think initially when we had heard of this, I was extremely excited just because it's bringing foot traffic to downtown Meridian, which is what all of us local retailers want and desire. So my greatest question, I have same concerns as previously stated with parking, obviously. We run into that as is right now even with our employees. We only have two employees aside from us and parking is obviously already an issue. And so that is one, but I don't need to reiterate it since it's been stated multiple times. Second, I think I just have a question because I think in the article it was stated that the retail spaces coming in were anchor stores and that slightly considers, or I guess concerns me just because I, we came and moved our business to downtown Meridian, we chose downtown Meridian over downtown Boise specifically to help the community of Meridian. We wanted something to come back to that exactly as they titled it, Old Town Feel. And that's really important. And we love, love, love this community. We don't want to have to leave this community, we want to, our small business to survive. And as do many other small businesses down here. So I'm curious to like, I hope that the knowledge is out there of how many small businesses are actually already anchored in downtown Meridian, but also those anchor stores, I don't want to have big-box stores come in and/or franchises that are gonna come in and knock us out because we're the people of Meridian too. And so I would just state, that's one of my questions for them is what are these businesses? What is the retail coming in? It's concerning for a small business owner that we already work our can off to try to survive in a community that doesn't have that foot traffic. So those would be my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. All right, last call. Anyone else wanna speak on this application before we bring the applicant back up? Not seeing any hands, I will ask the applicant to come back forward. We've got a few questions to answer.
That I do, Madam Chair, commissioners, thank you very much for all the public comments. We do appreciate it and many of them are similar to what we heard at the neighborhood meeting. And going through this, I guess, just doing what I can, took some notes, apologies if I don't get all of them directly. Parking concerns, yes, we have, we are cognizant of that and we are providing an excess of parking stalls because we did hear that in our neighborhood meeting and some of the same concerns about people parking on streets. So even taking out the required parking stalls for the commercial zone, there's still 1.4 parking, approximately 1.4 parking stalls per unit, which is over the one per unit that's required by code. And the office space is not, that's, you know, something that's future and like I mentioned, that at the time that that application is made, we'll be showing as well adequate parking to support that. As far as the tenants in the commercial space, I don't know where the comment from the, like an anchor tenant, we haven't really been any definitive talks with, or the developer's not been any definitive talks with any one in particular. Some things that have been mentioned or, you know, potential small healthcare allocation or just general cafe, daycare. Any quote-unquote anchor tenants would be going out to like the Village or like out to 10 Mile or like a larger zone right now. But we do wanna plan for, you know, a multi-tenant space that other small businesses can come in. But we haven't, there hasn't been any discussion with any, you know, anchor tenants. As far as that access, so we do have on the south property line, there is that rails-to-trails path that is gonna be landscaped and it's going to be fenced and separated from the U.P. property because we also are concerned, we don't want people wandering off into the tracks either. The area to the south of that is for fire department access. In one of our meetings with the city, we were just talking about, you know, fire department access for this property just to make sure life safety is taken care of and that that space would be used for fire department access in case of emergency and potentially open for busing. We, you know, have talked with, understand that there's some potential opportunities with Valley Transit, so we wanted to do that. And I know other, you know, potentials are, you know, some kind of a Metro Link type idea. I'm sure that that, you know, if a real viable option came open, that the owner of the property could look at that. But right now, it's just for life safety purposes and regional transit opportunities if that goes forward. And then regarding the density, you know, we're really looking at, for this conditional use application, we're really looking for the height. And comment, I'm sorry, I forgot, didn't write the gentleman's name down, about the context, the height of these buildings. I'm sure if you, you know, compare this building to a single-family home that was built back in the, you know, 1920s or 30s, yeah, it's a big scale difference. But I don't think that this structure is out of context. We've got the Valley Regional Transit Building across the street to the north that does have some height to it. To the west, we also have the Feed Mill and Meridian City Hall also have that height. It's just that we're bringing this height further out, you know, from kind of what's been established and been around for years. So it's not an unusual contextual application for a height like this. So as we focus on and look at our request for exceeding the height of the Old Town Zone, just like you to consider that. Any other questions?
A couple of the questions I had written down here from public testimony, there were a few that were worried about the construction and timelines. Can you talk a little bit about what that construction process would look like, what street closures would maybe need to be part of that?
That, I guess, yes, we agree with that. The construction of these two structures would not go on all at once. It would be more of a phased approach. We would start, I believe, if I'm remembering correct, our initial conversations, starting on the east side. So we'd have plenty of lay-down space in the middle or, you know, and then as we prepare the interim parking on the west. So there's lay-down space. So street closures should not, should be held to a minimum because of that opportunity for construction materials and construction staging to happen on the property itself. If the project goes modular, again, that would ultimately shorten the overall construction timeline again because of the efficiencies of building something in a factory and bringing it out here. Much of the picking and staging could be done from onsite. There might be some, you know, times when we need to, you know, close down Third for a little bit, but that's, you know, typical for construction. But overall, we're trying to manage that and mitigate disruptions for construction, you know, during that limited time that it's there. Because yes, it's gonna be, in general, a disruptive process for a while, but then it's done and over, so.
Thank you. Couple other questions I had on here, there was another couple of questions about the tenant parking situation and does everybody that gets a unit have assigned parking within the building structure itself or are they just kinda doing free parking wherever they can find a spot?
With the lease of the apartment, they will have a space, yes. So that comes with it, it's not, they're not having to, you know, pay extra for a parking spot, but they will have a space. And a lot of these details are still being talked about. There will be some kind of control access for residents, most likely, on the upper levels of the parking structure, just to make sure that those are designated for them and then there's gonna be a mix on the ground levels.
I don't know if you can share with us, I know there's, the west building has 185 residential units, the east building has 200 residential units, all kind of a mix of studio, one and two bedrooms. Do you have any examples of what the mix of that might look like? Are they?
Not off the top of my head. I know in the application documents, we do have kind of the layout, the, each floor plate is laid out. I'm sorry, I don't have the numbers right off the bat, but they are all designated to be stacked. So what you see for one floor plate is what you would get on the other floor plates as well.
Bill, I don't know if you still have the floor plate that was from, in the staff report that you could pull up and so that we could just take a look at it.
Here we go. See, I've got...
I think it's slide nine there, was one of them.
Looks like I've got, in the west building, per floor, 12 studio units, 14 one-bedroom units. One-bedroom, actually 16 one-bedroom units, seven two-bedroom units. Yeah, I can flip through that here. So it does favor more the one-bedroom and studio in general. So here we go. Scroll up just a little further. Down some. So in the east building, showing the blue studio units, there's 12 per level and one-bedroom unit, 20, actually 27. There are some unique units that we had to do for, you know, construction at the corners and 11 two-bedroom units. So it does favor the one-bedroom unit and then studio and then two-bedroom. So this is meant for a demographic that's young, young professionals, things like that. We're not necessarily targeting the large family.
And then I think we kind of addressed some of the questions about the right-of-way and the rail line. I know Bill covered some of that and he made a couple of comments, but did you have any other comments there on the right-of-way and working with U.P. and allowing them to still kinda do what they were doing there?
Well, yeah, you know, we're not looking at, I guess, we're not, I guess, impacting something, you know, rail lines directly. According to our documents, we have shown these to U.P. They haven't said any concerns about that, so.
Any other questions from the commission? Mr. Cassinelli always has questions.
Not right now.
No questions right now? Okay. If there's no questions, then we can have the applicant sit down and we can move to close the public hearing for deliberation unless there's anything else we wanna ask staff or, I'm gonna look at you to make sure that everybody's good with their questions answered right now. Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
With that, can I get a motion to close the public hearing for Meridian Station H-2019-0142 for deliberation?
So moved?
Got a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Commissioners, I'm happy to go first or I'm happy to let others go first?
I'll...
Mr. Cassinelli?
Kick it off.
All right.
Unless you want to.
Go ahead.
Question for, I know we're really just talking about height and not parking and a lot of the other issues are, what's in front of us tonight is height. And I do have, I tried to find it and I couldn't find anything to, and I need some sort of comparison. Bill, do you have any clue the height of this building?
Put you on the spot.
Can I send you up to the roof and throw a tape measure off? Are we under the 75 here?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, I can look up the original application, but I would imagine we're probably at 75 or in that range. I would imagine we're probably at 75 or in that range.
Okay.
I don't recall us going through a C.U.P. for a height exception for this building.
Actually, I tried to find it, City Hall, and I couldn't. Thank you. My, in looking at the height and everything, I mean, I've got, I've got strong concerns about a lot of the, some of the issues and concerns that were raised. The height is, in my mind, and it was brought up by the applicant, it's requested to be 100-foot for the density. And there's a lot of other places that we're looking at around Meridian that have, that are gaining density, that have the room to put in the density, have the, have everything else, the infrastructure, not, you know, not real narrow streets to handle the density. Couple of concerns that I have with the height. And number one, this is not, we're not looking at five feet over for a tower or something. We're looking at a 33% increase in the height from 75 feet to 100 feet. That will forever change the look of Old Town Meridian to go to 100 feet. It will dwarf anything. The applicant stated, Valley Regional Transit has some height to it, it's two stories. City Hall has some height to it, it's three stories. It will dwarf everything in here and it will change the look. I, that piece of land has been sitting, I mean, when I moved here, that Frontier Tire was still in business, but I've seen it go out of business and everything else around it. Yeah, I would love to see something go in. I don't mind the project so much, it's just, I think it's way over what the infrastructure of that block can handle. And then the other aspect I have with is, we give an exception on the height to go to 100 feet, where do we draw the line? That 75 feet is there for a reason. I think we need to stick within that and have developers, developer doesn't, you know, they're, you look at the owner, their business is not located in Meridian. They are interested in doing projects throughout the Northwest. They're not interested necessarily in downtown Meridian and the livability and walkability of downtown Meridian. They want to get maximum value on that piece of dirt. So if we approve the exception to go to 100 feet, where do we draw the line? Who comes in next? Somebody wants another 100 feet, somebody wants 120 feet. Where do we draw that line? And again, that's going to forever change the look and the feel of downtown Meridian. I think that 75-foot height needs to stay hard. It's my opinion.
All right, well, I'll go after you on that one.
So Madam Chair, if I, sorry to interrupt, but...
Please, go ahead.
Found the original application for City Hall, on the application, it stated 67 feet.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
So I'll start with, I'm born and raised in Meridian. I spent a lot of time in downtown Meridian growing up. I went to church downtown. We went to Sunrise Cafe all the time after church. We've spent a lot of time in downtown Meridian. I've been vested in the city since, longer than I can remember. When you look, I get really passionate about economic development projects and I know how hard the cities work to try and establish a really robust plan for downtown Meridian. And I know we've got an urban renewal district that does a great job of planning and they've done a destination downtown Meridian plan that I thought was pretty strongly laid out. I got the opportunity to serve on the Comprehensive Plan Committee as we talked about what the vision for the city should look like. And we've had lots of great conversations about what do we want our city to look like, not just now, not just the historical, but where do we want it to be in the future? And I would love to see Meridian be the place that downtown is a central hub where there's not a lot of people that, you know, there's a few restaurants in downtown Meridian that do a fabulous job and they're absolutely wonderful. What you typically find in economic development is the more restaurants you get in, even though people think that might mean more competition, the better it is for the small businesses around them. That's typical in almost any community you go to. The more density of products you get in a downtown core, the more opportunity you have for some of those small businesses. So in general, I actually, I like the density of the projects because I think one of the things Meridian's been lacking in our downtown is having that residential component where people can just walk downstairs and go to the neighborhood restaurant or go to one of the neighborhood shops on a Friday night if they've got a special business open. I think we've certainly been missing that piece of it. And when you get a project like this, I think it's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for Meridian to see a project like this because I can tell you, economic developers dream about projects like this every day. We try to work really hard to bring projects that are meaningful. And I would disagree that this developer, I mean, I don't know, I've never had conversations outside of this meeting with this developer on this project, but they're using a local architect that's based in Meridian, which I really appreciate. I think that shows a lot of dedication towards Meridian. I know that the compland, the staff, they've worked really hard to try and come up with a good project here. I do certainly feel for some of the comments that were here and I really appreciate that the community cares so much that we show up and we are part of conversations because I think that means a lot and it's part of the reason that I've called Meridian home as long as I have. I think that they answer a lot of questions for me already about construction and timelines. I think they'll try to be mindful as much as possible in how they do road closures when possible. When you look at the parking piece, I know it scares a lot of people to think about, you know, adding this much density and do we have enough parking to cover it? But they've got over more than 200 stalls, more than what our code requires. And I think they were trying to be mindful in the way that they brought that forward and having a service lot as well to service the project, at least for some of that retail component that comes in. So I'm not as concerned on the parking side of things because, you know, you're right that Meridian has a limited number of streets, street spaces, but we're adding 200 additional spots that we didn't have in Meridian before. So I think that could actually help some of our downtown businesses more than they might realize now. That's just a couple of thoughts I've got, but this project could go forward without ever coming to us in code. It's a permitted use to go in the city of Meridian to do a tower like this. The only thing that they are not permitted to do is the heights. So that's really the main question in front of us tonight. And because it's a conditional use permit, we can certainly talk about some other conditions if there's other things that we're worried about. But they're asking for the vertical integration of the 100 feet instead of the 75 feet and that's the main thing we need to consider. When I think about downtown developments, I, when you look at where height should be, I wouldn't want to see height in anywhere other than, you know, what we've got at the new Ten Mile interchange. I think that's a smart development where we've got lots of office buildings. They're working on integrating parking, they're trying to make a live-work unit there. We've got a design plan of what happens when properties surrounding that area in the overlay develop and how those come together. I think they've done a good job with that. I know Meridian's got a great plan when they look at downtown. Where else can you get height and density? I think downtown is the place where you want to see that activity center, you want to see the community plazas, you want to see more living structures and residential. And this allows us to add over 25,000 square feet of retail and office space to our downtown. And that's not an insignificant number. If you look at what properties are available in downtown Meridian, you want to open up a small business, there's not a lot of spaces that you can go to, especially in this market. So I like the concept of having more retail spaces. I really like that not many developers typically will pull off the live-work units where they've got the retail and office on the first floor and then they do the apartments above it. It fits really nicely for a downtown model, so that's at least my general thoughts for now, but I'll move on down the line and see if Commissioner Grover-Pitser have any comments they'd like to throw in.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do. I'm really encouraged to see that something is being slated or proposed for such an area that's been blighted for so many years, at least since I've been here, that Frontier Tire is coming on. And it's encouraging to see them bring in some housing down here where it can be a hub. My fear is that we're losing, we're losing what was going, what was supposed to be old town with this extra height. I know that the extra height, that the proposing is because to accommodate for the parking. So that's where I'm on this, on this yo-yo here. I'm not really in favor of the height, but I understand that they're doing that to add the parking, to help alleviate the problems that they're going to be facing without it. So I'm also concerned with the amount of people being that close to the railroad and that path on that south side would be a concern for me.
Thank you, Commissioner Pitser. I think you make a good point with the, well, so one thing too is on the rail, one thing to keep in mind is that it's not a Union Pacific Main Line, it's an offshoot. So it's not as highly trafficked, it's a spur there. It's not as highly trafficked as other places are and I think because you've got the parking garage and some of that retail on the first couple of floors, they're elevated up enough about, above it that you probably won't hear the sounds of rail if there are any things coming through in the middle of the night, if that's something that someone will be worried about. But I don't think our trains typically run too often in the middle of the night through that specific track.
Yeah, I don't think that was my main concern, is that rail to trails path as a pedestrian path.
I think the other point you made that I think was a good point is, you know, they certainly could move forward on this project if it was 75 feet without ever having to come in front of this body. And one way they could do that is to eliminate a whole row of parking and maybe one row of the housing. And then you would potentially have more challenges because they could go forward with 200 less spots for this project than they're putting forward.
That was kind of my point, was that, I'm, that's, that was my fear. If we oppose this without the additional height, they go, move forward, put it in without the additional parking, so.
Thanks, Commissioner Pitser. Commissioner Grove, floor is yours.
All right. I have a lot of probably strong opinions on this for a number of reasons. Just to put it out there, I've worked in downtown for, I don't know, over five years. I live downtown. I hang out in downtown. I have a personal interest in seeing what happens to this downtown. And I guess some of the things that I have a real hard time with is we see the community changing around us and we want to hold on to the nostalgia of Old Town Meridian and the history of what this town was, but we also want to revitalize it and have strong small businesses that can stay in business and prosper over time. But those things contradict one another to a certain extent, that I've been down here and watched businesses come in and go out because they don't have the foot traffic that's required. And so what happens is you end up with businesses that don't necessarily require that foot traffic, which then reduces the vibrancy of downtown. And so all that does is it pushes community gathering activity to other areas of our town, say the Village, Ten Mile as it grows out, or outside of our community, Caldwell, where they're doing amazing work in revitalizing their downtown, to downtown Boise. So it, all it does is, the more we hold on to single-family housing and businesses that have, you know, maybe four people walk in and out if they're, you know, doing, I don't know, I don't want to pick on any one business, but let's say a law office, you know? You don't, you're not creating that foot traffic that these other businesses require. And you don't get foot traffic by having parking right in front of a business. You don't get foot traffic by having parking that is, you know, just for that business. You get foot traffic by having people move. People move because they are going from one place to another. And if we don't have more of that, that's a problem. Density is something that I'm very passionate about having in downtown and finding ways to get that into downtown creatively. And with this project removing that blight that is sitting there, we all agree, that is not a good look for anyone who's coming into our downtown core. And so I'm excited about what, you know, this project, other projects can do to help reshape that, that look of downtown. We lose other businesses as they start in our downtown and they have to leave downtown and go to either other parts of our city or out of our city altogether because we do not have enough office space for people to grow. If you want to grow a business in downtown Meridian and have it be more than, I don't know, 25 employees, beyond that, you cannot stay in downtown because there's nowhere else to move to. There are no, no opportunities to grow business in our town, in our downtown. And so we, density of business, density of residential helps maintain the business levels of these other businesses in downtown. And that's, I'm sorry, but it's something I feel really strongly about that I, I understand what people are saying in terms of that nostalgia and having like the downtown, the old feel. The thing is, we don't have what a lot of older towns have in terms of old infrastructure to revitalize. There's only so many buildings in our downtown that can be repurposed, revitalized, changed into something new. And so if we don't do certain steps as a, as a community to make changes, to retain that vibrancy, retain that, the feel of downtown, we will lose all of that to other places in our city or outside of our city. This is a unique opportunity for us to make the steps, to plan for the next 25, 50 years of what our downtown can be. And we get to really help shape what that looks like moving forward. Some of the concerns that were brought before us, I appreciate hearing. I also would encourage the businesses that spoke to continue to be involved in the Downtown Business Association, where a lot of that information about projects is brought up and shared as people are thinking about ideas. And being involved in that way, it's a great way to be informed as a business, so, you know, people that might, one of the comments was, "I didn't know." That is one way in the future that you might have that opportunity to know some of those things ahead of time. Parking. I don't know how many people have come down to go park down here. I've heard parking is a major issue. Every time I come downtown, there is parking in the free parking lots. And I come morning, noon, night, weekends. It might be an education aspect, but there are always open parking spots behind Compass VRT, along Broadway, in the Mason parking lot. There are parking opportunities. They might not be directly in front of a business, which, you know, is what has been the norm for our city. And I think that some of those views will have to change as our downtown grows and matures. And so I appreciate the fact that parking is a concern and I agree that going forward, we need to be vigilant in how we look at parking and find ways similar to this project to centralize parking and make it more readily noticeable for people visiting downtown, but also people who live downtown, people who work downtown, that they know... downtown, but also people who, who live downtown, people who work downtown, that they know this is where you go to park. So those are some of the things that, I guess, I've been taking notes on. Everything that was given in the application, everything that was presented both by the, the, by Jeremy Architect and by all of the community comments. I don't think that we can take any of these changes lightly, but we, we have to be, we have to be purposeful in how we change our downtown. And if we go too small, you can't go back and make this and say, "Man, I wish we had, you know, instead of a, a single-story building that we just put in, you know, it's going to be a lot harder to, to make those changes down the road, to have that increased density." And downtowns are a great place to have density. It creates community. We, we need that density of, like I said, both residential and office. It helps restaurants, as Lisa said, you know? I like what you said about restaurants in terms of how they are not necessarily competing with each other, but creating a sense of space. I'm kind of paraphrasing, but.
I'll take it.
You know, you're going to downtown to eat. You're not necessarily going to your one restaurant, getting out of the car, right outside it, going in, eating, and then leaving. You're going downtown to experience Downtown Meridian. And I, that's the, the mindset that we need to have is we are bringing people to Meridian Downtown, to explore downtown, not to come, come in, pop out, get what you need, and pop right back out. We want to create that sense of place. And, you know, this might not, this is not, this project is not going to solve that by itself. Neither is any one single project. It's going to be a series of changes that are made in accord with, you know, one another and with the community to, to make that sense of place for our community in the long term.
Thank you, Commissioner Grove. I've got a couple more comments, and I see Mr. Casinelli has a couple more as well. So one thing I wanted to raise for all of the small businesses here too, and thank you again for showing up and being a part of the conversation. There are some fabulous resources in the city of Meridian, I know. Commissioner Grove mentioned the Downtown Association. We've also got a really active chamber. We have a very strong community development department here at the city that has also an economic developer. So if you haven't had a chance to meet with them, they can certainly help you through some concerns and some brainstorm some different ideas of how to help your businesses. So definitely take advantage of those resources. You know, I'm about to say a comment that I may regret because it may not be a popular comment, but I've, I've attended a lot of, a lot of conferences, a lot of workshops, a lot of webinars about how to do downtown developments right, and how to do community development and economic development. And I had one guy tell me once, and I'll, I'll never forget it because I, it, it's one of those things that sounds contradicting, but they said, "You know that when you've got a parking problem, you're doing something right in a downtown because it means that you've got somewhere that people want to be." And I would agree that right now, whenever I come downtown Meridian, I haven't found a challenge with finding parking. If I do have any challenge, I, I park maybe a block extra away, maybe two blocks max, but typically I've been able to find a space to be and be able to walk around. So I think it might change the culture a little bit to add some of these newer, denser products, but ultimately, where, where do we want to be in 20 to 50 years? And it's not going to be this one project that changes Meridian, but again, it's going to be a culmination of strategy, working together, helping to support our local businesses. And the way that we help our local businesses is by shopping local and trying to help as much as we can support those local mom and pops and give people a reason to come downtown to support them more, so. Mr. Casinelli.
I want to say, I, it's not that I'm, I'm, I'm in support of developing that property big time. I like an idea of, of retail, office, residential above it. I have no problem with that whatsoever. My issue is with the height and making the exception for the reasons of where do we draw the line? And if we've said no to other people in the past over height, why? Why is this, why do we give them this much extra height on this particular project? I want a vibrant downtown as well. I've lived in downtowns of, of large cities where it's been like that and where there is walkability. But I think we can do it at 75 feet. 10 Mile Interchange, correct me if I'm wrong, Bill, I think the height restriction there is 65.
Yeah.
And we're putting in, we're putting in five-story office buildings out there, and we're, and we're, we're getting the density out there with the 60, with, with that height restriction. We can do it. We can, we, this project can be scaled. There's no reason it has to go 100. It can be scaled down and, and still bring a lot of people. And I'm, I'm excited about the idea of, of having more restaurants, more shops. I'd like to, I mean, to see art galleries and other, you know, and more and more things in downtown, and I think we can do it. I just think, I think we can do it at 75 feet. And I don't, there, to me, there is not a, there's not some compelling reason that this has to go to 100 feet. And that's what's before us tonight, is making that exception on the height. I believe that we can, this combined with other projects that are going, that are, that are going to be coming in, we will have, I think we can get that vibrant downtown. I think we can bring people in. And we do have to be careful, and I think the ones, the one thing I've always been impressed with, with Downtown Boise is, is all their one-hour free parking that they have. And if you're there for two hours, you pay for, I mean, you wind up paying for two hours, like two bucks or three bucks or something. It's, it's reasonable. You can go in there and you can hang out for several hours. You can, you're almost, I mean, it's, it's gotten worse a little bit lately, but it, you know, it's, it's been pretty easy to get in there and find a spot, even if you just want to run into a store or two. And yeah, we want that. We want to be able to bring, still bring in people from, you know, not just have this as a downtown-only kind of thing for people that live downtown, but want, but bring in other people from, from, from outside of downtown, even, even from Boise and, and outlying areas. But again, I, what we're, what we're looking at is the height, and I, and I believe full well that we can do this, keep it at 75 feet or under. And I'm opposed to making the exception because again, where do we draw the line? Where do we stop making that exception? If, if we're going to make it for everybody, let's change the, change the plan and, and put it at 100. But it's at 75, that's what it was set, and it's done that, and, and it was there for a reason. So Madam Chair.
Can I?
You can, yep.
I want to make a couple more comments. I, I hear where you're coming from because that's the standard. Respectfully, I would disagree that, I, I think that the 100 feet would be adequate for this project because the thing I worry about is if you go back to allowing just the 75 feet, what's going to happen is they'll eliminate maybe a floor or two of the residential, but they're also going to eliminate a floor of that parking because they're not required to put in as much as they already did. And by code, they, they could get by with that. So I actually think in this case, the height is what's adding the extra parking stalls for us in the downtown. So I worry that if we don't allow this, this to come through as, as presented, then I think what may come through later, they're not going to be able to add another floor of parking later. I know parking is one of the most expensive structures to add when you're building up, which is why many developers don't do an underground parking lot when they're building a building unless they have enough units to make up the reason why they can justify that. And that's, I think, why they've requested the height, but that's just my comment. I wanted to make a couple other comments too about layout and the site design itself. I think they, they set it back from the street just a little bit, probably so it wouldn't seem as abrupt if you're walking down Main Street or driving into Main Street. If I was designing the way that this complex is, is laid out, I'd, I'd, just to make a recommendation and not something that would need to be stuck in a motion or anything, but just comments, I would love to see more of the, the green space, maybe on the front in the parking lot, kind of between the two buildings, so that it's a little bit more buffered and maybe gives better access off Broadway instead of being up on the front. But that's just a, a thought for consideration on, you know, how you, how you put the site plan together, and that's certainly something we would encourage you to work with staff on, getting some different comments there. But I always like to see more of the buildings or the green space on the front edge where you're driving down Main Street and see the parking kind of buffered in the back if possible, but that's just a comment. So I, I think we've had a lot of deliberation, and certainly our, our options tonight are to either have someone make a motion recommending, or we, we are the deciding body on this. It's not going to go forward to council. So the options we have are to approve the application as, as it's put forward in front of us to allow them to do the, the height variance. We could, we could deny the project, or we could ask for continuance if there is more information you feel that we need to get from the applicant if we wanted them to go back and rework something, so.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Casinelli.
I'm going to make a motion, see what happens. After considering all staff applicant public testimony, I move to deny file number H-2019-0142 as presented during the hearing February 20th, 2020, for the reason that exceeds the OT zoning district of 75 feet.
We have a motion on the table by Commissioner Casinelli.
Second.
We have a second?
I do.
Okay. Any further discussion on that motion? I would ask that we take a roll call on that vote.
Madam Chair. Commissioner Pittsir?
Nay, uh, sorry, yes, the decline.
Commissioner Grove?
Nay.
Commissioner Casinelli?
Aye.
I don't know if I get a vote in the process or not as chair. Yes, I, I would vote nay to that. So I would say, I would vote nay to the recommendation of denial. We're split, two and two. One thing we could look at doing is certainly, if there's anything we can do to come to more of a conclusion, we're certainly welcome to keep talking about it if you'd like, or we could also look at the idea of doing a continuance until we have some of our other commissioners that could join us, since we're missing three of us tonight.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Pittsir. And one note too, if you're making a motion to continue, we would have to reopen the public hearing to do so. So if, if that's where you'd like to go, we'd have to make a motion to reopen the public hearing for the purpose of continuing it.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, if I may not, I'll give you some guidance, if I may.
Please, Bill.
Certainly, this is a conditional use permit. Just a point of a clarification from Commissioner Casinelli. So 10, yes, in the CG zone, the maximum height is 65 feet, but some of the buildings in the 10-miler are in excess of 80 feet, 85, 90 feet tall. And depending, Old Town's a little unique. It requires a CUP no matter what to get that height increase. And there are other districts in the code, and you can do that through alternative compliance and at staff level, and doesn't even come before you. And so in that particular zone, that's what they did, they got a taller height. This isn't the case here. Now, you have a conditional use permit. You're right, you are the approving body for this. There's a couple of things you can do. You can continue it as you may want to, get some other opinions. Two, you can recommend a lesser height. You can say, "I don't like 75, 100 feet, but I like 80, I like 90." Maybe you can open it up and see if the applicant has appetite for that, to reduce some of that height. Or you can recommend denial, and they can appeal to city council, and city council can take it under consideration and determine whether or not they feel 100 feet is appropriate. But certainly, you don't, don't feel like you have to, I mean, obviously make a decision on where you want to go, but I just least want to put that on the table that there are other avenues for the applicant on this particular application.
Thank you, Bill.
Madam Chair, can I say something?
Commissioner Grove?
So I was just thinking about something that was said earlier about in terms of the height at the, the 10-mile versus here and how, how that's accomplished. And one of the things that I think about when we compare something to, say, that development area, is that that is all greenfield development. There's open space, so to get that same amount, even somewhat equivalent amount of square footage, you can go wider, you can go much more, you can go horizontally more than, you don't have to go vertical. Versus here in downtown, you're going to be very, very limited in how wide, how horizontal a, a structure can be. So our density is, is going to be determined by the verticality of, of projects. So that, that is why I, I would, that's why I approve this moving forward, is we are, we do have some hard limits that we're going to be running against in this. And I understand, you know, there's the limit, but, you know, all of the comments that came in from the community were about parking. And if we further take away parking from this project and exacerbate what is already a concern of the, the businesses that are down here, of the residents that are down here, I think that we're not necessarily improving the, that scenario. I think we're, we're only going to make it worse.
Thank you, Commissioner Grove. I know we, we seem to be a little bit split up here on the commission, and I, I would echo a lot of your comments that you just made there too. I think downtown is a little bit more restricted because you're right, we can't expand, we can't expand wide, we can only expand tall. And I think if we limit the height to 75 feet, and then in, you know, 20 years, we say, "Man, we're, I wish we had one more floor of housing on this, or I wish we had one more floor of parking that we could help support our downtown, that it'll be too late to add anything then." So I think that's, that's one of my, my heartburns. And if, if we're leaning towards denial, I would almost rather continue it, just so that we can have some other perspectives, because this is not a, an insignificant project. And I think Bill made some comments that if, if we were to deny it, they certainly could take action to appeal it to council, and I think that they would. It's a big project for Meridian. I think it's something, you know, they've, they've, they've not taken lightly, and they've been thinking about for a long time in how this corridor would develop over time. You look at some of the new buildings that we've gotten in downtown, I think the Compass Building looks really nice. They can add some architectural elements that keep it looking with the Old Town feel and have maybe some of that brick on there. They'll have to work with staff on that, but staff does a good job of, of making sure that they meet what the surrounding uses are, so I'm not too concerned about that either. But I, yeah, I, I, I don't know where, where we'd like to go, but if we prefer to go the route of opening it back up to talk with the applicant a little bit more and see if they'd be willing to make any changes, we certainly could do that. Or we could look at continuing it until we have a, a larger commission to consider it, or we could open another motion if anybody else has something else they'd like to throw out there.
Madam Chair, I, I guess my concern was is that, that it sounds 25 feet, it sounds, this sounds minor on the outside, but I'm taking it and saying, "I'm looking at this building and adding 35 feet to this building for, for that purpose, which is basically across the street." And it doesn't seem unreasonable on the outset, but I, I, I propose that we continue the public hearing for, for Meridian Station until we get more input.
Madam Chair, if I may make a comment. The, the one comment that, you know, if, looking back on this, if, if we were to approve the 100, or set it at 75, and then we say, I don't, I don't know that we'll come back and say, "Gosh, I wish it would have been 25 feet taller." On the flip side of that, if, if we go 100 feet and say, you know, "This just feels like any other large city downtown, we can't make it smaller." There's two sides to that, there's two sides to that, and I just, this is, this is not It's, it's not another large city. I don't think that's why people moved here. They want, there, there's a lot of aspects of Meridian that I want to see maintain. I do want the vibrancy. It's not that I'm opposed to that. I just, I fully believe that we can scale it. I think there's, there's, there's probably thousands of projects across this country of where you've got four or five floors. got four or five floors, and not seven, to where it could be done. I believe it can be scaled. I don't know if we want to look at, it sounds like we're split tonight. I don't know if we want to, if this is something we want to wind up throwing on city councils, throw it to them and have them be the decision maker, as opposed to the four of us. Or, I mean, I would be open to continuing too, and getting to another date to where we have possibly even all seven of us. And I think that would be critical, would be to have the entire commission here.
I don't think we have the ability to just throw it to city council for the conditional use permit. I think that is up to this deciding body for how to proceed with this specific request. It would only go to city council if the applicant decided to appeal our decision. You know, one other comment I'll make too is, when you think about how Meridian's developed right now, we have a lot of single-family homes throughout the city of Meridian. And sprawl is a big concern when you talk about growth, and our roadways are getting more congested. You've got a lot of those roads. I mean, you look at any of our roads that gets you around from one side to the other, if you're trying to get from the freeway to Chindon, you've got to take some of those side roads. And part of the challenge is we've got a lot of single-family homes, which spread us out. So you get a lot of traffic that goes on those roads. And one of the ways you help reduce that sprawl is by having more dense projects like this, where you have a couple extra floors of housing, so that people can be in a spot where they can do more of the live-work model. And our downtown is pretty close to the interstate. It's easy to get from point A to point B if we did have somebody living here and working downtown Boise, and would take people off of some of that North Meridian strain that we're feeling a little bit right now. And I think, I like the height because I believe in density for downtown development. I just think that it's smart planning for where you want to be in the future. But I know if, we're beating a dead horse at this point, and I don't know if any commissioners have changed their thoughts on that. But I'd say if we haven't changed one way or another, I would certainly take a motion if someone would like to reopen the public hearing to talk about a continuance.
Yeah, Madam Chair, would you like to open up the public hearing and get input from the applicant on whether or not they're, would adjust their request?
Thank you, Bill. I would direct in your motion, if you're opening to continue, please be specific about what you want to open the hearing for. So if you say you want to open the public hearing, and you want to hear from the applicant, be specific in that request that we're opening the public hearing to hear from the applicant and look at a continuance.
Madam Chair, I move that we reopen the public hearing to hear from the applicant to see if we can get more guidance, and see if he was able to give us some information as to what his other plans might be.
I've got a motion to reopen the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The public hearing is open, and we would ask the applicant to come back forward and speak with us once more. You've certainly heard some of our deliberation. If you wouldn't mind staying your name again for the record, appreciate it.
Certainly. Jeremy Putman, Madam Commissioner, or Madam Chair Commissioners, I guess we're not ready to talk about kind of height reduction, because we don't really know what that is. I guess we would be open to a continuance, you know, to bring this before more of the commission that may be available at a future time.
Thanks, Jeremy. Any questions for Jeremy, specifically that we'd like to ask while he's up here?
Madam Chair.
We'll start, Commissioner Pitzer, she had a question.
No.
Commissioner Castanelli.
Did you ever look at designing something within the 75-foot parameter?
We did. For the developer, it didn't pencil at that, at that height.
When you say it didn't pencil, it didn't pencil financially?
Correct. And then also, you know, there is the loss of parking stalls, trying to reduce that. Another, you know, consideration in height, if the project is modular, modular construction does have a thicker floor thickness, because you're actually building floor and ceiling assembly, or you're building a floor assembly in one module, and then the ceiling has similar structural requirements. So that naturally pushes it up. So just as another advocate for the height, trying to do this in a more sustainable and responsible construction method, that is just a reality of that type of construction as well.
Thanks, Jeremy. Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So at this point in time, the public hearing is open. So if somebody wanted to make a motion to continue, I would ask again that your motion be specific about what we're continuing to do, and who we would open the public testimony for in the next hearing. And we probably should ask staff what hearing dates might be available, if that's the route we'd like to go. Bill?
Yep, Madam Chair, members of the commission, March 5th works great for me. I mean, the staff report's done, you have our recommendation for approval. It's in your hands now to deliberate and come up with a decision. Now, keep in mind, you know, I'm not trying to sway you one way or the other, just giving you options. But certainly, this body could recommend a lesser height in the applicant with a recommendation of approval, and they still could approve that to city council. It doesn't necessarily have to be a denial. So if this body was comfortable more with 80-foot, 85, 90, and you approve it, the CUP, with a 90-foot height limit, they can certainly appeal that request to city council and have them change it from 90 to 100 as well. But I put that on the table for you too. Or again, you can continue it and wait for other commissioners to weigh in.
Thank you, Bill.
Yeah, there's nothing on staff's end to do anything. We'll just bring it back for deliberations, and maybe the applicant can talk with their representatives and see what they want to do as well.
All right. So if anyone wanted to make a motion for March 5th, it would be my thought that we wouldn't open it up for all public testimony again. I think you would just open it up for conversation with the applicant and deliberation among the commission. I will leave it to you all if you'd like to make a motion to continue. Can't make a motion.
Madam Chair, a question for, Bill, what is the calendar like on the 5th as opposed to whatever the following, the 19th?
Yeah. Madam Chair, members of the commission, the 5th would be a couple of large projects on the 5th. So we're looking at five projects for the 5th, and I think there's potentially 6th on the 19th already. So it's, both are going to be full. But I don't see this taking that much longer if you do continue it. Sonya has two projects, I have two projects at hearing. So if this would be the 5th one, carry it over to the March 5th hearing.
We're still open if anyone would like to make a motion, or the other option is to reclose the public hearing and make a motion of approval or denial.
I move to continue file number H-2019-0142 to the hearing date of March 5th for the applicant to present to the larger committee. Mission.
So just if you don't mind, I'll, so we've got a motion on the table from Commissioner Grove to continue file number H-2019-0142, to hear from the applicant and for further deliberation just with the commission.
Correct.
I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I've got a motion and a second to continue the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
All those opposed? Okay.
Nay. Aye, on the opposed.
So you've got three in favor, one opposed. We will see that application again. All right, we will move forward now to the public hearing for Almond subdivision, H-2019-0135 by Todd Campbell Construction. And we'll begin with staff report.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, last item on the agenda this evening is the Almond subdivision. This is a request for annexation of a plumerie plat that consists of 9.91 acres of land. It's currently zoned RUT in Ada County, and it's located at 5885 and 5875 North Locust Grove Road. You can see on the future land use map, that's before you, that the property is currently designated medium-density residential on our comprehensive plan. With that particular designation, we anticipate densities between three and eight dwelling units to the acre. The applicant is here to proposing an annexation with the R8 zone and a plumerie plat consisting of 50 residential lots and seven common lots on 9.91 acres of land in the proposed R8 zone. Minimum lot sizes range from, it's 41, 61 square feet, with an average lot size of 4,692 square feet. Gross density for the proposed project before you this evening is 5.08 dwelling units to the acre. So falling right in between that three to eight dwelling units to the acre, net density is 6.11. There are existing structures on this particular property that will be removed upon development of the site. As you can see here, access is not proposed to Locust Grove with this particular development. That is consistent with both the UDC and the ACHD approval. With the developments of the surrounding properties to the north and the south, there were two step streets provided to this property to provide interconnectivity with the adjacent subdivisions. So those are the access points for this particular development. Because this is a subdivision, and it does exceed the five-acre minimum, the applicant is required to provide 10% open space. The project that is before you this evening depicts approximately 16.6% open space, consisting of landscaping or walking paths around the perimeter of the development and the landscape buffer along Locust Grove. The applicant is required to provide one amenity for the proposed development. In this particular case, the applicant is proposing three amenities for the development, which is the internal walking path, there's a community garden with a plaza area, and then also along Locust Grove, the city's master's pathways plan requires a 10-foot multi-use pathway, and the applicant is extending that with this proposed project as well. I know parking with the narrower lots and the narrower streets, the commission and this body has had concerns with parking. The applicant did provide a parking plat for you to take under consideration this evening. Based on the schematic that's before you this evening, the applicant's able to provide 37 additional on-street parking stalls for this development. The applicant did provide sample elevations. What's unique about this development is these will be patio homes. So the applicant is proposing all single-story homes for the development. Some of them may have bonus rooms, which technically are considered two-story in the building code, but they're designed into the trusses of the unit, so it looks, it gives the appearance of a single story. As part of, because this project is not providing, you know, a lot-for-lot transition with the adjacent subdivisions to the north and south, they have that green space. And the applicant's working with the neighbors and also supportive of the single-story residences along, within the development, we are recommending that as part of the development agreement in the staff report. In looking at the public record, we did receive written testimony from nine residents in the area. Primary concerns were traffic through the adjacent neighborhoods, safety for the children with the additional traffic. The residents would prefer a direct access to Locust Grove rather than using the local streets that were stepped to them. And then also delay from the emergency response is one of the other, one of the other primary concerns. And then also would like them to have more central amenities or open space within the development. Staff is recommending approval of the development as proposed with you this evening with the requirement of development agreement. The applicant is in agreement with the conditions of the staff report. Staff will conclude this presentation and stand for any questions the commission may have.
Thank you, Bill. Any questions for staff? Questions for staff? Would the applicant like to come forward? If you wouldn't mind staying your name and address for the record when you get up here, that would be great.
My name is, a little wiggly, Dean Waite, I live at 4283 Nystrom, and I work for Todd Campbell Construction, the applicant. Madam Chair, Commissioners, thank you for your time tonight. And special thank you to Sonya and Bill, and the rest of the Meridian staff that helped us through the process of getting to this point. Almond subdivision will be marketed as the cottages at Serenity Gardens. Do you guys have the same thing before you that I have? Okay.
Yep.
Pardon me? Oh, that's true. Do you have a little PowerPoint that says Serenity Gardens? Bill went through the location, but yeah, we are just right there, quarter mile south of Chindon on the west side of Locust Grove. He also went through the surrounding zoning. R4 is what the land is zoned to the north and south of us, and R8 to our west. Being currently in the county, we are proposing, requesting annexation into the city and designation of R8 zone, which is congruent with the Meridian comprehensive plan and the future land use map. Bill went through a lot of the points of the plat, but I just want to reemphasize what we are doing with the open space. As he stated, the requirement is 10%. And we wanted to, we wanted a subdivision or a community that people feel good being outside and using the open space in their subdivision. So we have proposed a 20-foot landscape path that buffers both the north and south boundary, and continues through to the 10-foot path out onto Locust Grove. So we want to be able to create an area where people can go out and use and be part of, this will be heavily landscaped, and it also is a benefit not only our subdivision, but to the neighboring subdivisions, providing that buffer between them and our housing. This is a short video to give you some perspective of what we're proposing. This shows a virtual representation of what the cottages at Serenity Gardens will be, or what we're proposing it to be. These are actually plans that we have designed to fit these lots that we intend to use in this subdivision. We are a custom home builder, so the exact design and location of which house goes on which lot, and the selections of how the homes are finished, that'll be determined by the market and by our individual home buyers. But this is how we would see this subdivision coming together. You can see, we propose detached sidewalks, and the, it gives you a visual representation of what that path will look like and that landscape buffer. We have agreed to the conditions presented by Bill, that we do only single-story homes in this subdivision, to help with fitting in with the landscape and the other homes around it, with the exception for bonus space with no back rear-facing windows. Currently, I'd make a note that all of our plans are designed as true single level. There are, we don't have any designs with the bonus space, but if the market demands it, we'd like to keep that opportunity open. This is another little perspective of that walking, that buffer with the walking path. You can see where we plan on doing the wrought iron fence there, and each home will have its own gate to be able to access that path. We hope to make it more usable. Sometimes subdivision amenities are just there, and they're not usable. We want this to be something that our residents actually do get out and are able to use. It will be heavily landscaped with three different garden areas. And we call, one of these areas, like this is a meditation garden with some seats, a feature, water feature to help people enjoy the outside. We have a community vegetable garden planned as well, and then some other flower gardens. I just wanted to emphasize the three things that I think are highlights of Serenity Gardens. The detached sidewalks and landscape walking path make it safer for residents to enjoy being out and walking, and also create that buffer between us and the neighboring properties. I just spoke of the three land state garden areas that we will include in this subdivision. And then also, if approved as presented, the homes that we're building are, they're high-end luxury patio homes. Innovative design, award-winning interior and exterior designs, and high-end finishes. I believe that there is a strong demand locally for this quality product, and that Serenity Gardens will be an asset to the city of Meridian, and fit in well with the surrounding communities. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Dean. Any questions for the applicant?
Pardon me?
Commissioner Pitzer, speaking to your microphone, please.
I'm sorry, what is the price point of your homes?
That's not determined at this point. They will, it would be well above 400, 1,000, I would assume by the time we start building these.
Thank you.
I have a question a little I, I have a question a little bit, if you wouldn't mind going back to slide with the layout of your subdivision. I think it was one of your first slides in there. So I, I think one of my only questions is on the cul-de-sac on the east side. You've got a number of homes that are sharing that cul-de-sac, and obviously they wouldn't be able to park within that cul-de-sac, but what's the plan for trash carts? Would there be a dedicated spot for people to put their trash carts out? I, I just worry with that many homes in that one cul-de-sac there, it might be a little tight.
You know what? We have not, I have not considered that portion of that yet. We, we did discuss the parking, and that's why we created the parking plan, but I have not thought of or discussed the, where the trash carts would go. I live on a cul-de-sac right now. It's not as dense as this cul-de-sac, but the units in the cul-de-sac, we, that we put ours around the corner of the cul-de-sac. We have, I think, five homes on our cul-de-sac, so this would be significantly more than that. But there is space too, where that cul-de-sac turns, it's got a long corner before the driveway would, because there's no driveway in lots twenty and thirty-one, you have that full length of that lot where, where they could go.
Did you think about possibly, one thing, and maybe, maybe we will get to that in a little bit too, I'm sure we're gonna take some public comment, but when we look at the, the area on the east, I don't know if you guys would be willing to consider a couple less lots there to, to put a little less strain on that cul-de-sac, but. I don't know if you have any comments on that, or if you'd be open to considering something a little less dense on that corner there.
That'd be, I wouldn't be able to make that decision standing here before you, but obviously what we're proposing is what we want.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant right now?
Madam Chair. Dean, had you, a couple things on the parking, so on the, the on-street parking. First of all, is, is the street width, is that standard residential street width there?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not.
Parking on both sides.
So it'll be parking on both sides?
Correct.
Okay. And it's, the, the lots are tighter, so there's gonna be less room. I mean, are we, did you design that around thirty-seven Priuses or you got thirty-seven Suburbans?
No, standard parking space, Meridian, using the Meridian UDC, yeah.
Okay.
There's a certain, the Meridian designates what is a parking space.
Okay, well, I know it's not gonna be striped or anything out there for that, but it is, you're considering full, full length?
We use the Meridian designated parking space.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Dean. Any other questions? Okay. I'm sure we'll be talking to you in a few minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. I would like to, we're gonna open it up here for public testimony as well. And just a couple of comments I want to make before we, we do so. There was some written testimony that came into us, so we do read all of that, and we really appreciate all of your, your time and your thought and your energy. One big question that came in was access to Locust Grove, so I just wanted to address that now, and certainly if staff had any comments, they could make those too. But ACHD, if you read through their staff report, they don't allow access off of this specific section to Locust Grove. They, they had those sub streets there for a reason to, when this parcel would develop, that it would be an infill sort of project. So I don't know that we'll have the ability to, to look at having them have access directly onto Locust Grove, so I wanted to just kind of make that point, but certainly we'll take all public testimony and would love to hear from all of you. But I know we've got a number of folks signed in. We asked earlier if anybody was speaking on behalf of a homeowners association or representing more than one person. I would ask that maybe we start with that, that group first if we can. But if you'd raise your hand if you're representing a larger group and other people are ceding their time to have you speak for them? We've got one gentleman.
I think there's one other set of homeowners here from our association.
Okay, then if, if there's not a show of hands of who's, who you're representing, you'll have the, the three minutes, but if, if anybody would like to cede their time to this gentleman, they could raise their hands. Okay. Okay. Then I, I'd say we would let him have up to ten minutes if he'd like to. Let's go ahead and have you come up first, sir, if you wouldn't mind.
Madam Chair, are they clear that if he gets ten, then everybody else is?
Correct. The, those that raised their hand are ceding their three minutes, so that this gentleman can have up to ten minutes. And everybody else that would like to testify, you still have the ability to testify for your three minutes.
Good evening, my name's Tyler Rowntree. I live at ten ninety-eight East Passakana in the Arcadia subdivision, which is located next to the proposed development. So I put together a quick PowerPoint. Like some of you, I have lived in Meridian my whole life. So a little bit of history out in the north core on where this development is being proposed. So Arcadia is the R eight, that's right there in the middle of the PowerPoint. And I'm gonna use pieces of, of each of these. This one's a little clearer now, obviously, than the one that we just looked at before. So Reserve is the subdivision that's on Commander, that's immediately to the north of the proposal. When we moved into our house in oh seven, Reserve and Arcadia both had come online and people were moving into there about the same time. Unfortunately for us, we bought our house right as the market started to turn in oh seven, and the market started to get really volatile. Most of the homes in Commander were full. The first six houses on each side of that street, so two past the roundabout, was all that was there. So it was us and them out in that north core. The interesting piece with Reserve is Tahoe Homes was the one who developed both developments. And Tahoe wanted to make Commander a street that came in and turned into a cul-de-sac and went back down into the proposed development that is to the south in two thousand and five. So here's some zoning notes that I was able to find. Mr. Centers actually debated with PNZ for over a year to try and prevent the thoroughfare to be established to Jericho. He did not want that to happen. At the time, in oh five, they had slated that there would be at least five hundred residents utilizing that connection to Locust Grove. And Mr. Centers did not want to be part of that. So he sold the back five acre parcel, and he just developed the first six. And it sat that way. And the market got volatile. So Jake had the first six. The back half was left undone, and he actually owned the northern portion and had plans to develop it. And then everybody knows what happens in oh eight. It got really bad. So the market crashes. So what did the market crash bring? Well, for us, the upper portion of the bottom photo on that aerial photo was an apartment complex. The developer came in, put in all the infrastructure in that, and it went, went to a new owner. It sat for years. The worst part about that was, is that became a major drug exchange on that north highway corridor on Chindon. And stuff from Canyon County into Boise, that was the hub. It was terrible, because there wasn't anything out there other than that asphalt and foundations. That's it. The R fifteen density that is in the, the map now was to be part of the R eight density that was next to it as Hightower. That went back to the bank too, and it sat. Plat expires. So Reserve had their six houses. Mr. Centers still had that five. So what did he have to do? He had to sell at auction that piece, and it went away. If he would've developed it, it would've developed out and been part of Reserve subdivision. But things happen. It's gone. So where are we today? The apartment complex that's up there, CBH Homes bought that. And CBH Homes actually helped us out. They built the apartments out, but it was a bit of a fight because CBH Homes wanted to come in and double the density. And we bantered about it. PNZ approved it. It went to council. We bantered about it again. And council actually denied the request to expand the apartment complex twofold in that area. That happened about five years ago. When the developer came in, the moon was too close for him. The things he promised were unbelievable. And this is what we have existing today. The parking requirements met the UDC. There are not enough. There is not a book to explain to you what happens in projects like this. People cannot afford as a family to live in an apartment. So there isn't a mom and a dad and a couple of kids. There's a mom and a dad and a couple of kids and two or three other people that live there. So the overflow parking now conveniently has the asphalt that was supplied for the light office that this other parcel is approved for. So they, they have parking, they just don't have enough. Once the office space goes in, if that ever happens, it's gonna be a mess for parking. We already have people parking on the street because of the overflow and some of these high-density units that are out in this north core. So the R fifteen piece was a piece that CBH Homes bought also. And CBH Homes came in front of PNZ and said, we need to increase the, the density to R fifteen to make this pencil. The economy was terrible. We as homeowners supported that. I live right up against Talon Street. I have homes twelve feet from my back fence that are two stories tall. But we bought it. The economy was terrible. They replat it, and it sat. So you can see the picture attached to that. That was our street two weeks ago. It was impassable for a week. You can see conveniently that the framers are framing in the front yard of the house across the street. I got no help from ACHD. I got no help from Meridian Police. I got no help from Meridian Code Enforcement. The school bus actually had to turn around and find another route to pick school kids up one morning through this construction project. We have endured density in this north core, and we picked part of it, right? That's how we got here. So this subdivision is not even, they've built the perimeter out, but the center core, there's twenty-four more duplexes that are going into it. We haven't even seen the effects of traffic from this yet. And the irony in this is, is ACHD says pretty much the same thing every time. It's not bad, much like this one. It's six percent. It's a few more cars, not that big of a deal. Well, I can tell you what, there's some people sitting behind me that it's a big deal for, because Commander is a main thoroughfare. And ACHD assured us when the apartments went in that that wouldn't be a course of travel for people living in the apartments. They would go out to Chindon and go out on Chindon. Well, I don't know if you've tried to get out on Chindon at seven thirty in the morning, it's impossible. So they come through Commander, or they go on down through our subdivision into Segaro Springs, that was also part of the foreclosure process, who has now had speed bumps put through it to get around the chicane or the roundabout, however you want to treat that. The, the traffic, we, we haven't even seen the effects of what's, what's coming. We have just finally finished up with somebody who has decided that is living in this new development, that selling used cars out of his residence was okay. And there was enough on-street parking to park his used cars. And so we finally got that cleaned up. So ACHD makes the, the traffic comments. It's at an F. It's over already, but it's under the ten percent threshold at six percent. But when you go back to twenty fifteen and you look at the increase in density on that one piece where Barton's built, we haven't even seen that hit the streets yet. Those haven't even sold. So those are gonna hit the streets, there's gonna be more cars for that. We got six more percent over here. So as these little percentages get approved because they're under ten, those stack up, and we're not keeping track of what little we've already let through. The open space, I think is great, and I commend Todd for what he's done with open space. It's great. But there's a cost to open space. So Meridian PD's comments, you have to have natural observation opportunities. So I took the opportunity to take a photo of our common area in Arcadia. So we have common area to the left side of that picture, we have common area to the right. And I would ask you, does that look like open space to you? It does to me. Here's the center of our subdivision. That's open.
If you can work on wrapping up your thoughts too.
Okay. Because we are conveniently located with Central High School, that is the overflow for places for kids to do what kids do. And it has become an issue every spring, every fall for the high school, so much that Officer Sonata is in my phone, and I just call him up and say, hey, you've got kids over here hanging out in the common area again, doing things that kids do. So really, for us, the, the point with this would be, I think that, I'm, I'm fine with the development. Todd Campbell needs to develop it, but I think the density needs to match what it's around, not to double it up. Twofold, two to one, is what he's proposed. Some things that came out of our neighborhood meeting, he assured us that, you know, he can make this happen, he's super nice homes, that's all great, and the, the parting comment, two, two pieces is, is Meridian has to have density, gotta do that, that's important, gotta make it happen, money, money, money. And be careful what you wish for, because it could be CBH that comes in to develop the property. So with that, I stand for any questions.
Thank you, appreciate it. If you all wouldn't mind, hey, this is a public hearing, so we try to do what we can to, we don't do clapping, we don't do hooting and hollering if possible, we try to keep it respectful. We're all volunteers here on the commission. We're here to listen to all of your concerns, but we want to keep it respectful process for the applicant and for all public testimony, so thank you for that. Was there anybody else that wanted to testify for a larger group that was having others cede their time? Can if you'd stand up, is anybody willing to give their time?
I don't think so.
And if, if no one else is raising their hand, we'll give you three minutes. So you've got three minutes and state your name and address for the record for us, please.
Thank you, Madam Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Renee Hanson, President of Segoro Springs HOA. My address is fourteen thirty-five East Tuttle Street, Meridian. And the homeowners of Segoro Springs is requesting that this be denied, again, because of the density. And I'm not understanding, we didn't understand that ACHD had already refused the entrance onto North Locust Grove Road. If we could have an answer to why that is, because you are directing, or, sorry, excuse me, that would direct traffic into our neighborhood. And we're not so much opposed to the subdivision as, again, the amount of homes and the additional traffic. It's already bumper-to-bumper traffic going through our neighborhood, rush hour. Four years ago, we were exceeding three hundred cars at the high-traffic times, and this is four years later, so it, it's way beyond that. Yeah, so if we could have, if there's some way we can work with ACHD on getting that entrance onto North Locust Grove Road opened up, that's mainly, our main concern is the the, the traffic that would be created through this new subdivision. We would prefer if Meridian could see it as an open space or a park or something like that, which there is, there are none of in that area.
Thank you.
That's all really the time I need, because I know there are other people that want to speak. to speak.
Thank you. Bill, I don't know if we want to answer that question now, but the question about ACHD and how we allow accesses in and out of developments and how we do long-term planning, if you want to answer why we limit those accesses.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, members of the audience, it really comes down to restricting access points to arterials in conflicts to that roadway. The more curb cuts and conflicts you have to the road, the more you add to the congestion and you slow down traffic. So in this particular case, there's an access that's provided to the north, to reserve that goes out to Locust Grove and to the south. And it was Madeleine Estates. I don't know what they market it now, but there's another collector road that feeds out to Locust Grove. So when we look at what's currently built in the area, there's adequate access for this development to use the existing local street network to gain access to the arterial. And so the city has rules and regulations, and one of those rules is to restrict access to arterials when local streets provide it. In this particular case, when the adjacent subdivisions came in, those stub streets were set in order to provide... Prevent additional access points to Locust Grove. It's just safer for everybody to use local streets and get to collector roads out to arterial roadways. That's how the system is set up. So right now, the way ACHD's looking at this, the way we're looking at it, it's functioning the way it's been designed to. And so there is no additional need for another access to Locust Grove. The traffic will disperse adequately throughout the adjacent subdivisions.
Thank you, Bill. One other comment. I'm going to have Madam Clerk here go through the list of who signed up to testify next. But if you've heard a comment made that's something similar to what you want to say, we certainly want to hear all of your comments, but we hear that there's concerns about traffic and there's concerns about congestion. So if you've got new facts, those are the things that we really want to hear. Certainly, we'd love to hear from you, too. But Madam Clerk, who do we have sign up?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Six others have signed up to speak tonight. Ron Need.
Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Madam Chairman and members, my name's Ron Need at 1421 East San Pedro Street. That's in the Seguro Springs subdivision, which used to be Madeleines. And I'm a retired civil engineer and I've done a lot of developments in California and everything else. So I have experience with this. I have no problems with the development of this property. What I have a problem with, and what is before this board at this time, is the zoning. And that's what we're addressing is annexation and zoning. My review comments are the zoning. The current development on the north and south side, as you've already been instructed indicated, is R4, like the previous comments were made. The subdivision on the east side, which the previous speaker before indicated, Arcadia, is R8. However, it was developed into an R4 density. There's only about 3.75 unit for that 10-acre parcel. So what you're looking at is putting an R8 development within an R4 area, completely R4. Even though it says R8, it has been developed to R4 consistency. The parcel size of the proposed development is approximately 10 acres. The width of it is over 300 feet by 1,200 feet long. It's identical to the reserve. They're both almost the same shape. The reserve has 26 units on it. This one's doubling it, almost doubling it to 50 units. And so I think what happens is what we need to talk about, and especially what was brought up previously, is the traffic concerns, is the part that these can be mitigated by reducing the density. The density is the big item here, for me, anyway. The density's going to affect the traffic flow. The density's going to affect parking. You know, they can mention all the parking they want, but when you have 45-foot lots and a driveway for 20-foot and a 20-foot, you're... It's going to be hard to find a parking place. My conclusion is the proposed development is incompatible with all the adjacent developed subdivisions, which have been developed and conform to R4 zoning. The R8 zoning requests should be denied and changed to R4. And this would reduce the traffic flow as well and allow for more parking. And also probably allow for more open space that is consistent with the adjacent subdivisions. And as you stated earlier, you're for high-density. Downtown's ideal. Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Madam Chair, Velma Need?
No, I didn't put that in.
She did for me.
Okay.
Thank you. Renee Hanson? Sorry. Valerie Miguel-Ross?
Valerie, if you wouldn't mind stating your full name and address for the record, we appreciate it.
My name is Valerie Miguel-Ross. I live on 1448 East Tuttle, so I live on a home that'll back up to this development. I have to say, I was happy to see that walking path. I do have a question for the developer. The two properties are at different elevations, so my fence sits higher than the property below. I want to know what they're going to do to address that elevation change where they're putting in the walking path. Is there going to be retaining wall or some other thing done there so that our fences aren't falling over? You know, I think it's going to be a problem. To also, we've already talked about the traffic, but I don't know if you've driven through our neighborhood before. You come in, you have to turn right through an unmarked intersection, which people do not yield properly already. Then you have to immediately turn left through another unmarked intersection where people don't yield. Go over the speed bump, but you don't go over the speed bump. Everybody's figured it out. You drive up the middle of the road because then you don't have to go over the bump. So now you have people in the middle of the road that have not yielded, and then they have to go around the roundabout, which I doubt people are going to use that. They're going to cut the corner and not go around. So there's a lot of traffic issues going through there. We also have a cul-de-sac there in that area where you have to go through. When people have large gatherings, cars park on that short section of road on both sides. So people coming in who now have to turn there, it's one car at a time. So you can't do those turns. I don't know how the fire department will do those turns if there's people parked on both sides. Tracy, I talked about the elevation. I think parking code is wrong. I don't know who can address that. All you have to do is drive by preload. And we have a huge parking code problem. These people say they're matching parking code, but it's not enough. They're going to end up parking at our pool as they flow out of their neighborhood and fill up all of our parking spaces. And just my final comment, really, you need to densify in the right areas. I don't think this is it. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk? You've still got a couple of seconds left. You're good.
So the other thing, you talk about ACHD not wanting access to that road. The church has two driveways. I mean, if you don't want that many driveways coming on, why did you give them two? And then Locust Grove is eventually going to be widened, right? There's going to be two-way turn lanes down that thing. It's going to be big enough to handle the traffic. Our neighborhood can never be widened. It is what it is. And this decision is huge because once you make this decision, it can't be fixed. If you go high-density, we can't take floors off. We can't undo this. So thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Judith C. I didn't want to butcher your last name.
Judith, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record again.
Judy Kaye, 1480 East Commander Street. I agree with everybody else, the traffic is going to be ridiculous. I'm watching this traffic continuously. We've been there eight years. And with all the high-density building that they've put in on Jericho, we're going to live with that. We cannot live with this development also. And the poor people that are going to buy those homes, they're on top of one another. That's not fair to people and to kids who want a yard to play in. So I am opposed to it. I'm sorry, there's not more people. There were some people from our subdivision earlier, but they left because they had to get home to kids. But really, please look at this. Yeah, you're just strangling all of us.
Thank you for being here and for your comments.
Madam Chair, Mike Prada?
Is there a Mike?
Cheryl Jones?
We're striking out.
Well, I have. Thank you.
Would anybody else that didn't have a chance to sign in like to testify? Sir, go ahead and come forward and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Jerry Munzer. I live at 1275 East Tuttle Street. And I've been talking with the police department about your issue with this not having any access off of Locust Grove. And he was very shocked that you let this go through like this. He said, "I don't understand why they're going to have all these policemen and fire department cut through our neighborhood." Right now, I have an average of 135 cars go through the street that I live on in an hour. Now you want to bring in another 200 cars? It isn't working. My grandson has almost been hit once, but I know you don't care about that. You want more density. So you need to put a street coming off of Locust Grove, which is going to be widened, and it's going to have a center section so you can make a left-hand turn, and you need to cut down these homes. Because if they're not family retiree homes, we have a community pool that we pay for. And why should I have to pay association fees because the little kids are going to jump the fence and destroy the property that I paid for? We've had the kids from Swar Girl Canyon come in, jump the fence, and break all the lounge chairs and so forth. So you're going to bring 50 more homes, plus the kids, plus the damage? I'll send you the bill. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify tonight? Go ahead and come forward. State your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Matthew Storch. I live at 1135 East Tuttle Street. Just one quick thing. All the access streets that they're proposing have roundabouts there. And they're... The roads are pretty narrow there. You know, you can barely get a car through. You can't get through if anything's parked there. I'm concerned about how they're going to get the construction equipment through there to build these homes if there's no access from Locust Grove. I can't see how they're going to take a long tractor-trailer or something carrying trusses or whatever and make those turns and get around through those streets. And if they're backing and filling through there during rush hour, then all of us are going to be late to work. That's all I wanted to say.
All right, last call. Any other hands? With that, we'll have the applicant come back forward to answer some of those questions and concerns.
Do I need to restate my name? Dean Wade?
Thank you, Dean. Yep, go ahead and restate it.
The main concern was traffic. And what I would... My answer to that is that we are proposing, it's about five units to the acre. We're asking for an R8 zone because there's not a R5 zone. And so we're right in the mid-range of what is proposed by the comprehensive plan. And the first comment from Tyler, asking about the parking plan and us going to the minimum, we're not going to the minimum parking. I was stating Mr. Calleney's... Casinelli, sorry, his question about the size of those parking spaces. There will be 237 parking spaces for 50 homes if you count garage, driveway, and the 37 extra spaces. So there's going to be a significant amount of extra parking in this subdivision. Another comment was made that with the other further development around, that the traffic threshold is... Or the traffic's getting greater and our... That threshold, that 6% that he's talking about, is our contribute... Contribution to the local traffic is going to go down as that develops because we, you know, our number stays the same as the other traffic rises. So our threshold and commitment to that gets lower, further away from 10% as more development happens. There were some other questions about the size of the lots and the density of this project. We feel that there is... It's important that there's different types of product available. There is a high demand for this smaller lot downsizing patio home-type product. And that's one of the reasons that we're doing this product is because it's going to be in high demand and sell quickly. Mrs... I didn't quite catch her last name. Miguel-Ross asked the question about the elevation change between properties. There will be a grading plan that is presented by our civil engineer as we present this. The existing fences, we're proposing to remain intact, so there won't be any change with that. We will grade up to them and match the... As closely as we can with the landscaping that we're doing. And the last... Jerry brought up the issue with families and kids doing damage. Obviously, we can't dictate who buys our homes, but this product is geared toward retirees and downsizers, people that don't have large families and make a big impact on traffic and/or kids running around. But so our target market is people that are not going to contribute that as much as the average. And that's... I think I answered the questions that I heard. Was there any other questions that you had that came up that you'd like me to address?
Does the commission have any questions they'd like to ask?
Oh, there was a question that I didn't write down about the cul-de-sacs. There is no parking in the cul-de-sacs. We will... We are required to put no parking signs in that cul-de-sac and the common drives.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Casinelli.
Dean, a couple of quick questions. What is the average size of the home, square footage?
Well, we're not proposing the home sizes. The plans that we have, the average is 1,800 to 1,900.
Okay, thank you. And did you look at... Did you look at planning this out to R4 at all? And if so, how many homes were you... Would that?
We considered several different designs of this subdivision. I didn't... I'm not prepared to tell you what... I don't know what... What was your question? How many would be?
If you were to go R4, what would you drop down to? If you had looked at that? I mean, maybe you've never looked at that.
Yeah, no, less than 40. That's all I could say. I don't know. We did not consider... I don't remember a plat that we considered that was R4.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Grove?
Madam Chair, I had a question. You said this is geared to but not restricted to. It's not like a 55-over community? Is that how I understood that?
That's correct, yes. We... In the patio home developments that we've done in the past in Meridian and Boise, I'm just... The buyer that we see most often is our single individuals and/or retired couples. But we know, we are not designating this as any age restrictions or anything.
Any other questions? All right, I think that's it for now. Thank you. And I'm sorry, we're done with public testimony at this point. So the process that we go through is we typically open it up. The applicant starts first, then we open up to public testimony, and then we allow the applicant to kind of have some rebuttal comments. So I... I'm sorry, we can't. You can certainly answer or ask any questions of the planning team later. We won't be able to take any more public testimony for tonight, but we appreciate you all being here. So with that, I would take a motion to close the public hearing for all month subdivision, H-2019-0135.
So moved. Second?
Got a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All oppose? All right. Who would like to go first?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Casinelli.
Couple of questions for staff. Bill, is Commander designated a collector? Do you know?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, I don't believe that street is. But let me look on our GIS map real quick and I'll get you...
I'm guessing Segundo isn't, but... And then I had another question for you, too.
What's your other question?
Did you... I'm assuming you guys... You looked at the transition from four to eight, the lot sizes on both sides? And maybe if you've got some feedback on any of the...
And maybe if you've got some feedback on any of the concerns that you had in that?
Yeah, certainly. I'm happy to kind of provide stats rationale as far as supporting the smaller lots. Yes, in the comprehensive plan, we have policies that encourage transition. And when we have the ability to do that, a greater, a larger development, something of more acreage, we typically do that. We want you to kind of blend in with the surrounding and then feather into your smaller lots. This particular lot is an infill lot. So, if they were to come in with an R4 lot, I think the residents were very accurate. They'd lose half the lots. It's easy math. They're 4,000 square foot lots. You need an 8,000 square foot lot in the R4 zone. You're going to lose half the lots. You're going to come in at, similar to exactly what the reserve looks like, 26, 27 lots at the most on the, on the site. So, that's, and so, when Sonya and I, we did our analysis, when staff looked at the analysis, we felt that the buffer along at least the north and south portion of the site is 30 feet wide. It provides that adequate transition. So, staff's recommendation wasn't to do lot for lot. It was to say, "Well, we have this nice open space and green space between the units, plus a backyard, so there's adequate separation." So, therefore, the common open space would make a, just as good a transition as it being a lot, one lot per lot. So, that's where staff's recommendation and the fact that the applicant's willing to restrict themselves to 25-foot in height, which typical zone is, as you've heard testimony from Mr. Roundtree, he said that he has a two-story home 12 feet from his property line, and that's not very attractive sometimes. So, this developer, at least, I, we're willing to restrict some windows if we have a bonus room, and we're willing to keep ourselves to a single story. In our minds, that provides some adequate transitioning, and that's why we support the R8 and the density that's proposed before you this evening.
Thank you.
Any other thoughts you want to share with Commissioner Casinelli? Do you want to go around the room first?
I can, I can just throw out some thoughts. I'm torn. I think it's, first of all, I'm familiar with, with Todd Campbell's product, and I've got some in my neighborhood, and we had looked at some. It's a, it's a good product. It's a really good product. The patio homes, I think, are going to cater to, they are going to cater to an older crowd, fewer children. And particularly at the price point, I think that these are going to come in, and I think that's probably going to play out. I think the, if this goes through, I honestly think that the neighbors would probably be pleasantly surprised at the quality of this, of the homes in there. And I think that will probably, you know, you're going to get probably an older mix of people. You're not going to have younger kids that are driving faster. I get it down my street. I get, you know, 7:30 in the morning, everybody's racing to get their kids to the, to school and the bus stop and stuff. So, it's crazy through my neighborhood. I know what that's like. On the flip side, it's critical to listen to the residents of Meridian. These are the stakeholders. These are the taxpayers, and this is coming in the middle of two R4s, and I get that. So, that's kind of where I'm at right now. I won't even, my issues with ACHD have been expressed time and again from up here. And it was, it was stated earlier, I'm not going to, I'm not going to say that, but I do have concerns with the way ACHD looks at things. But I'm torn because I think it is going to be a good product. I think it's actually going to be beneficial. Don't think the, I don't think it's going to be as bad as some of the people think. But I would like to, I do have a concern on that. You brought up the cul-de-sac, and I think that cul-de-sac has to be taken down. I think it's way too much. I think there's issues with that. But those are some of my thoughts. It's a good product. But again, I, it's critical to listen to the neighboring residents. So, I've got a concern there. So, that's kind of where I'm at right now.
Commissioner Casinelli, that Commander Street is not, is a local street. It's not a collector.
Thank you.
I could dive in with my thoughts unless one of you wants to go first, but.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Grove.
Kind of echo what Bill said in terms of the density. I would prefer that it matched the R4. I see why it doesn't based on, you know, what's in front of us. But my biggest thing, and I haven't had a chance to gripe about this yet, so I'm going to, is ACHD and the street level service of F and saying that it's 15 years out is just astronomical to me. That is asinine, in my opinion. And I, I, that's where, that's a sticking point that I'm getting, that I'm just having a hard time wrapping my head around is, you know, as it's been said, like having, you know, a few percentage points, but a few percentage points on an already bad road doesn't help things. I, I'm struggling with that con, that aspect of this project. And, you know, the worse those arterial roads are, and the more we're going to see the traffic concerns that everyone has addressed tonight kind of exacerbated. So, that's, that's my biggest, like, hang-up right now is, is that. I, I think the project looks nice. I applaud infill, and I like that. I'm on the fence on where I'm at with this, but those are my thoughts right now.
Thank you, Commissioner Grove. Commissioner Pitts, do you want to go next?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And just talking into your mic if you.
Oh, sorry. I, I, I like the product. I don't, I'm sorry, I'm trying to get to my, oh, I guess I'm not in control of this. I don't like the court. I think it's way too dense in the court. I think the density is too high altogether. The street parking with that much density, I'm having a problem with. But I agree, the, the, I don't think it's, I think you may be asking for something different. When you get the density back down to R4, his option is going to be to build two-story homes with maybe families and more children. And then we have the issue with schools. Whereas right now, as an older person myself, I don't get up at 7:00. I don't, I don't have to fight rush hours, sit around and have my coffee. And my cars go in the garage. I just don't have as much stuff. So, there's some things I like about it, some things I don't. I'm definitely not liking the east side of the project as a whole.
Thank you. I think my comments in general, I, you know, I've driven through and I've toured a few homes, too, in the past of Todd Campbell's. And I know he's got a good quality product that he puts out. And I appreciate some of the thoughts that they put into things like the pathway that would buffer the neighboring parcels. So, instead of having a shared fence line, there would actually be a little bit of a breathing room between there. So, I do appreciate that design element there. I think I still have heartburn over the east side of the lot and how many homes are off of that cul-de-sac. So, you know, thinking about density, I do appreciate infill when we can get it so that parcels can be more cohesive, for sure. We all have challenges with the way that ACHD manages roadways, but it's not something that, we unfortunately have a lot of control over some of those policies. So, we do the best that we can, but this specific infill parcel was designed that when it would redevelop, it would utilize those two sub streets that were lined into the development. And overall, hopefully, what would happen is that that would help share the burden of some of the roadways because people would go south or north to get out of the subdivision. But I know it's not an ideal situation, and we certainly hear your concerns. We, we look at this application for the first time along with all of you, so we receive the packet the week before. We don't have any of these conversations ahead of time. But our job as a volunteer commission is to sit here and to hear the public testimony, hear the application in front of us, and make a recommendation to council, who is the ultimate deciding authority. So, I just wanted to point that out, too. I think, I'm hoping that maybe what we can do is, is make a recommendation that would lead towards some sort of compromise where, you know, perhaps they, they keep it as an R8 density, but maybe they could remove a few of the lots that would make us feel a little bit better about some of that density in there. I, I would prefer to see, you know, no more than, than three lots on, off of that eastern portion where you've got those six lots there. If they could reduce those down to three lots instead of six. And then, you know, I'm not too concerned about the drive-al with the two homes off of the other side of the cul-de-sac. But having, what is that, 10 homes off of one cul-de-sac, that, that does give me some heartburn. So, I would say that, that would be my thought, is if we do decide to move this forward to council for their consideration, I would request that they would reduce the number of homes off of that eastern cul-de-sac at a minimum. But that's my thoughts for now. Any other thoughts? Commissioner Casinelli.
I guess a question for, for Bill on that. How could we potentially direct the applicant to reduce the, I mean, can we, can we come back with a number?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, currently in the staff report, we've asked for some revisions to the plat 10 days prior to the city council hearing. So, if it's your desire for them to lose some lots, I would ask that you either limit it to a number, lose two lots, lose three lots, whatever it is to make you feel comfortable that it's going to, it's going to work. Theoretically, I could see them combining those lots and going from six to three and doubling the lot sizes along that. They lose three lots. Certainly, if they don't like that recommendation, they can take that up with city council. But that's something that you can carry forward, and they could, and we can add that as a condition of approval. Or you can recommend that as a condition that they combine those lots and lose three lots and go forward with a plat with 47 residential lots or whatever number you come up with. But I'll leave it up to your deliberations.
Thank you, Bill. Commissioner Casinelli, other thoughts? Commissioner Pitts?
I wouldn't mind seeing that cul-de-sac taken down to a total of about five. I think, and that, maybe that could be a good compromise for everybody I don't, in there. I don't know. But again, I, I do know, you know, from over the product, I think, the price point, they're going to, they probably did this, it's, every developer's going to come back and say the same thing. We take away four lots, it doesn't pencil.
We can certainly make the recommendation and have city council negotiate further with them. I think that might be a fair compromise is to ask them to reduce the number of lots off that cul-de-sac on the east side.
Madam Chair, to what?
Commissioner Grove.
What number are you, where, kind of came down on a couple of different numbers there, so I'm just on a.
I know Commissioner Casinelli threw out a different number. My thought was to reduce the six lots that are on the far east side to three lots. I don't know if I'm concerned as much with those other four homes, but, you know, potentially we could, we could reduce that down to and ask them to reduce those 10 lots to whatever number we felt comfortable, whether that was six or seven, whatever you, whatever you all felt comfortable with.
Madam Chair, so you're, you're, you're okay with the transition from R4 to R8 to back to R4, having this infill as an R8?
Well, and I think what we're discussing, too, is it would still be an R8 designation, but they wouldn't be maximizing what they can in there. We would be reducing that number. So, it may not be quite R4, but it might translate to being what an R6 would look like, potentially somewhere in the middle. Because they can build up to a certain number of lots in an R8.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Casinelli.
If I could just comment on that. I'm normally not a big fan of that kind of transition and wouldn't, wouldn't like this. But in looking at the fact that these homes are going to be single-story, they're not going to, it's not like, it's not like you're having an R8 full of two-story homes bearing down on you. So, I think that, I think the transition, while it's not ideal because of the style of the homes, I think it's going to be probably better than, and those that have a bonus room, typically, they're going to have a window to the front and not to the back.
I think that's a great point. When you look at a subdivision like this and you're, you're looking at more of a single-family product, that's single level, it certainly makes a big difference in the way that that comes forward. If there's other comments, certain, certainly happy to keep discussing. If you, someone would like to try and make a motion, certainly happy to take that, too. Commissioner Grove? Any other comments we'd like to make first? Your mic's off if you're.
Do we have a number on that, on the, of lots to take off?
Want to keep talking about that, we certainly can.
Is it five? Is it, I mean, having six on the cul-de-sac, five on the cul-de-sac, what, what seems to be? Because that's going to determine the motion, I think. There's 10 right now, which I think is excessive. No doubt.
And so, Bill, you said five and ish is kind of the number that I was getting. Is that right?
I think, part of the, I mean, I think six would be, five, I think, brings some of the concerns that the neighbors have a little bit. It's going to take the traffic down a little bit. No matter what, no matter what gets built in here, there's going to be traffic. And I, and I, I do think that because of the product, it, it's not going to be a lot of, I don't, there, there's going to be kids in there, sure. But I don't think it, you know, not if these were 2,500 square foot two-story homes.
You could certainly make a recommendation to eliminate five lots overall and have them work with putting together a new plat, but that there wouldn't be more than six homes off the cul-de-sac. You could do something like that. Sorry, not a thought?
That, that sounds good.
I'm sorry, sir. We, we have it closed for deliberation. We can't open up for the public testimony. We'd have to reopen the public hearing. But if you want other comment to that, too, and I know we're, we're not going to open a backup for public comment tonight, but you're certainly welcome to show back up for the city council hearing and send in further written letters, public testimony. They would be happy to hear your comments there as well.
I'm going to add one other thing. I mean, my, and I'm just going to, I'm going to echo what Commissioner Grove says, that the levels on, part of my hesitation, too, to be putting this through is where Locust Grove sits with ACHD. And it's, and that road is not scheduled to be widened. I think I read in their comments, either 2031 to 2035, we could be looking at 15 years out before they widen Locust Grove. And it's, it's already beyond max capacity on there at peak hours. So, it, tough one, a tough one for me.
I think it's even tougher when it's an infill parcel that we're looking at because it's not a, I mean, from 50 homes in this subdivision would provide about 6% of the traffic for the overall development that ties together. And it's not a large enough number that ACHD requires them to do a city traffic study. And so, there's certainly challenges there. I don't think adding another access to Locust Grove would assist with that because there's another one just to the north. They try to limit them because otherwise, if you have too many access points all stacked next to each other, you have more traffic challenges with people pulling out in front of each other and not slowing down. And I'm certainly aware that there's traffic challenges on Locust Grove. I wish that we could prioritize it and get it moved up the list. The only way it gets moved up the list is when there's traffic concerns. And I know that the city works hard to put together list recommendations. The county puts together their list of recommendations. School districts put together their list of recommendations, and then ACHD takes all of those to prioritize what corridors get done next.
Yeah, and a tough one, too, is knowing that Commander's not, it's designated a local street and not a, not a connector. So, there isn't, just this was, this was not planned out like it should have been. And hence, it's an infill project that we're having to deal with.
I, I'm not liking the density of. Well, I, I'm not liking the density of the 50 homes. I mean, if, but I, I think there could be something in between.
I think I feel like the, if we asked them to eliminate five lots and got them to 45 building lots, and not putting more than six on the cul-de-sac, they could come back with another plat before council meeting.
Do we continue?
I don't think we necessarily have to continue it. We certainly could. But we can make recommendations to city council, and they'll have to revise that plat before it goes to city council so that it's fresh for them to look at. I mean, if you, if you all wanted to, we certainly could look at continuing the application again. But I think if our recommendation is just that they would eliminate some of those lots and make it a little bit less dense, we're not going to see too many significant changes, aside from what we just suggested there of limiting what's on that cul-de-sac. So unless you want to see other changes, we can.
No, because I, I mean, I'm totally in favor of the, of the pathways on both sides to help that buffer zone because, yeah, 12-foot self-backs are so narrow that I like the design of it. But I think it's the density that just has me, so.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Casinelli.
Question for staff. Bill is the DA in staff report. That still would call for single-story. Is that correct?
Yeah, Madam Chair, members of the commission, Commissioner Casinelli, correct. Currently, it says restriction of 25 feet. And then if there's a bonus room, it's still provision for a bonus room and no windows on the rear of the structure. It'll all be oriented towards the street.
Okay. So that would, if we were to, if we were to make a recommendation to drop the number of lots, that still is in there?
That is, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Grove.
All right, I think I'm ready. After considering all staff and applicant and public testimony, I move to recommend approval to the city council of file number H-2019-0135 as presented in the staff report for the hearing date of February 20th, 2020, with the following modifications: to reduce the number of lots by five, and to have no more than six lots off of the cul-de-sac on the eastern portion of the project.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion to recommend approval for Almon subdivision, H-2019-0135, with a limit of 45 building lots, and restrictions on the cul-de-sac to six lots. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Uh, motion passes. Thank you all for being here this evening. We need one more motion for the night.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Casinelli.
I move, we call it an eight adjourned. Second?
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, me adjourned.